Good evening, I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2020 Isaguat City Council Study Session. Councilmember Hall is running late this evening and will be joining us shortly. We have five agenda items. ID 0630, Workers' Compensation Retro Refund Acknowledgement. ID 0620, Carbon Inventory Update and Community Planning. ID 0609, Green Isaguat Funding Opportunities Forest Carbon Credit Program. ID 0614, Solid Waste Collection Contract Extension. And ID 0601, Shoreline Master Plan Periodic Update. So with that, we'll get going and we're going to start with ID 0630, Workers' Compensation Retro Refund Acknowledgement. And we have Stephanie Johnson, interim HR Director, along with Pete King, Peter King, from the Association of Washington Cities. Stephanie?
Good evening, thank you. I have the privilege this evening of introducing you to the CEO of the Association of Washington Cities, Peter King. I received a phone call about a month ago now with really great news that the city would be in receipt of a refund regarding our workers' compensation program in the amount of upwards of $50,000. We get excited in HR when we get such a phone call for revenue. Part of that phone call was a request by the Association of Washington Cities to come out and talk to you all about the great efforts that the city is making for a safe workplace. So before I hand it over to Peter, I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the staff in the city that make such a phone call happen. We have a number of staff who champion safety in the organization. We have a few staff you see here on the slide here that have gone through a program that the Association of Washington Cities has offered in past to do a retro safety coordinator certification designation. We have a number of things that the staff does on a daily basis, including citywide monthly safety meetings where we have representatives from each of our departments, get-together, increased communication, review accidents, injuries, near misses, safety efforts in the city. I've had the privilege of going out to a handful of the department meetings, specifically in public works, parks maintenance, police. We do a handful of trainings in the organization throughout the year. And then our partnership with AWC takes some of the guesswork out for us as well. We partner with the Association of Washington Cities for just best practices. Peter here is going to talk about our member pooling for risks and rewards, and one of those rewards is what we're receiving this year. They help us with OSHA and regulatory reporting. We work with them for some hearing reimbursement and miscellaneous other rewards and programs. And then, you know, while we try to avoid, you know, workplace injuries to begin with, when we do have them, we try to do our best to keep people at work through light duty. And we work on things such as a stay-at-work program with AWC as well. So having said all that, I just wanted to recognize the efforts of staff that make such a phone call possible, but I want to hand it over to Peter, who is the one that requested to come out and talk to you all this evening.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. Again, my name is Peter King. I serve as CEO of the Association of Washington Cities, and it's a little bit unusual for us to come out, but this is an unusual time with the retro program because we were able to accomplish and have the largest refund in the program in the last 15 years. And let me talk a little bit about the program. Before I get started, I did want to introduce a couple of my colleagues. Carol Wilmes is with me this evening. Carol's Director of Pooling Programs for AWC. The retro program is one of several pooling-type programs that we offer. We also have an Employee Benefit Trust program where we have 275 cities and other jurisdictions that participate in that. We've got a Risk Management Services Agency. We have a Drug and Alcohol Consortium, and I understand Isaguat is a member of the Drug and Alcohol Consortium. So we have a variety of programs that are available to you on a voluntary basis if it makes sense for Isaguat to participate in those. Those are available to you. I also wanted to introduce Brian Bishop. Brian is the manager of the retro program, so if you have any difficult questions, I'll be asking him to step up and respond to those. But I'm really here to congratulate the city, the coordinators that Stephanie mentioned, the work that you all do in loss control to make sure that your employees are safe and that they're working without injury. I just want to acknowledge the city's efforts because that really is a citywide effort, and that's what this program is all about, is to make sure that your employees are working safely. It's also very nice to be able to say we've returned about $51,000 to the city based on the program activities that happened back in 2016. So it's three years ago. You have to take a look back, and this is closing out the 2016 year. And because of the excellent performance that the city had, you're eligible for a refund of the amount that is available to the group. So what is retro? It's, you know, in our state, workers' compensation is managed by the state. There isn't private insurance available, as in other states, as in most other states. So the state allows, like employers, to group together and create a program where you can, if you do well compared to other retro groups, or if you manage your losses and you have good losses and you manage those claims, and there's a refund at the end of that program, it's available to the participants in the program. So in 2016, the program ended up with a refund based on the 115 members that were in the program at the time. We ended up with a refund of about $2.62 million that was available to the 110 cities and agencies that are in the program. The board decided that they wanted to distribute 70% of that money out, and part of it is based on the performance. So the cities that did well, managed their losses, had good loss control programs, managed their claims, are able to get a higher refund. And that's why the city of Isaguat ended up in that 110 cities. You were ranked number four in terms of the dollar amount that you got back as part of that program. So quite an accomplishment. The program started in 2004. Isaguat has been in the program since the inception, since 2004, so we appreciate that. And we are available for loss control, claims management, consultation on workforce safety, and we're available to do that. So we do have staff that's able to come out, work with your staff, and make sure that workers are working safely, and that's really the objective. As I mentioned, it was the largest refund in the program's 15-year history. Over the term of the 15 years, we've distributed about $4.5 million back to the participating cities. So we're available to assist. Next year at this time, we'll be looking back at 2017, so we have a three-year look back. And I would hope that we would be in the same position to be able to distribute some of the funds back, and in addition to putting a lot of that work into consulting services and technical assistance for your city. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know you have a full agenda, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And again, congratulations. It's a time where you can step back and feel good about what the staff has been able to accomplish and you've been able to accomplish as a city.
Any questions for Peter or Stephanie? City Administrator Bob Kowetz, I'm going to promote you.
Deputy Council President, members of the council, having Peter here, I would ask, perhaps he can give another plug for the rest of the organization that he represents. I don't know that Isaguat, you've been to a council meeting recently in Isaguat, and so perhaps you could just say a couple of words about AWC and the work that they're doing, and anything else that's happening down in Olympia.
I don't know if I want to comment on what's going on in Olympia right now, but let me just say that we've been around since 1933. We're a nonprofit association that was created by city officials who wanted a voice in Olympia. Back in 1933, they got together in Yakima and said we ought to create an association. So that's the beginning. We really focus on advocacy as one area, service as another area, and that's how retro and some of these programs are, and then education in another area. So those are really our three foundational things that we do. Advocacy is clearly what we do at the state legislative level. We're in the middle of a state legislative, short legislative session. I think all of you should be receiving our legislative bulletin. We get regular updates. We are there to represent your interests. Our Board of Directors is made up of 25 city officials elected by cities throughout the state, so they really set our policy, set our agenda as to what we think is most important for the agenda. We're halfway through the session. As of last Friday was a cutoff, an important cutoff, so policy bills had to be out of their first committee. Today was a deadline for budget bills to be out, so things are winnowing down. It's a 60-day short session. Transportation funding is a big issue for us, as I'm sure it is in your community. We've got basically six priorities that we're working on in this short session, and we'll be continuing to do that. The other area where we do advocate, which many people don't realize, is with state agencies. So representing city interests before the Washington Department of Transportation, or ecology, or other state agencies that you interact with on an ongoing basis, where you're a representative in Olympia. So if you're having a particular issue or a challenge with a state agency, it's very likely that another one of our 281 cities statewide are having the same, so we can be your voice with that agency and bring those issues forward. We are having a mayor's exchange Thursday this week, so we're going to have about 45 mayors down in our office in Olympia, and the state auditor will be there to address them, the state treasurer will be there to address them, and there'll be a chance for the mayors to talk about common issues that are happening in their communities around the state, an example of our education. We do training for newly elected officials, and we have lots of resources for those that are newly elected. Did a training in December where we had about 300 people statewide participating from 12 different locations in a day-long training. So if you're looking for resources, hopefully you can give us a call or go to our website, and there's lots of information available. So advocacy, education, and services, we have about 65 staff in our office in Olympia, and our mission is to serve you, so please don't be shy about calling us or asking us for any kind of assistance. I know we're in contact with your staff on things that come up, and elected officials are the primary group that we do serve.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Just a couple things. Oh, Councilmember Goodman?
Go ahead.
No?
Well, I was just going to thank you for coming. It's nice to have you here, and also thank you for the great news. That's just wonderful news. Typically, we hear the opposite, where we need to spend more money, and it's just happy and thank you very much. And thank you, Stephanie, and from the folks who participated in the city for all the work that you've done to earn this.
Stole my thunder. I was just going to, I wanted to thank everybody who works for the city of Isaguat for delivering the services in the way they do, and doing this in a safe and smart way so that we can do the most with the resources that we do have. And I also wanted to recognize Peter for being here, and also his colleagues, and also the Association of Washington Cities for being such a great partner with us for all these years and helping us do our job by managing the programs in the way you do. So thank you, and thank you for coming and joining us tonight. And as Councilmember Goodman said, you know, it's nice to get great news like this instead of what we have been known to get in the past, so.
Well, thank you, and I would refer you to all of our legislative materials. That is kind of the hot issue right now. We've got the bulletin that comes out weekly. We've got our weekly hot sheet on issues. And if you have something that's particularly of interest or impact to the city, feel free to give us a call, and we can have one of our lobbyists or our policy analysts kind of go through the details on how things might affect you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to ID 0620, the Carbon Inventory Update and Community Planning. And we have Sustainability Director David Fujimoto with us this evening presenting. And we will, after the presentation and council comments, we will be taking public comment on all the remaining agenda items.
Good evening, council members. We're excited to be here tonight to talk about carbon inventory and some community planning related to climate. I'm also joined here by Megan Curtis Murphy, who is a sustainability coordinator with our department. And we're happy to take questions along the way if you have any questions for us. Our primary purpose for you tonight here is to do two things. One is to share a little bit of information about the recently completed carbon inventory for the community, and then also talk about a potential approach for climate planning going forward. And we'd love to have some feedback about whether we should proceed with that and also about our proposed approach for doing so. As I mentioned, the direction we're seeking is the feedback on those two different pieces. And also, as a point of background, you may be aware that we've, the city administration has been responding to an interest from the community on climate and some groups that are very interested, and have been meeting with them for several months and talking about their interest. And so that's kind of provides some context in wanting to be responsive to that and to see what direction the city should go as we think about future work on climate. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the carbon inventory, which Megan will walk us through. We'll also give a little bit of context on climate mitigation and resiliency and those two components. The city has done some work in this area in the past, and so we wanted to share a tiny bit of information about that. And then we'll talk a little bit about the convening approach that we'll be proposing this evening. Stepping back a little bit, I wanted to share with you, as we're thinking about environmental stewardship and climate and sustainability in the city, we are in the process of reorienting a body of our work towards the strategic plan so that we can be more focused on environmental stewardship. That's included some things such as checking back in and reconnecting with a number of organizations locally and regionally who have connections to the city on environmental matters. And that's ongoing work that's been very valuable to get some feedback about what's working well, were there opportunities for improvement, how might we be able to strengthen some of our partnerships? We are also checking in with the Rivers and Streams Board. We'll be starting some of that work in March to see how we might be able to work with them better, to have them inform some of our city policies and programs going forward, what the scope of work might look like for that group, how we can better take advantage of that great community resource that we have available for us. There's also some great work already underway with our Parks Department, with our Green Isaguat Partnership. You're going to hear about some of their great work that they've been doing on forest carbon credits as well. There's a body of work related to some of the city's land use and construction codes that are related to sustainable development standards, some pieces of which you'll see within the Title 18 discussion that'll be coming forward. And then there's also some plans for Earth Day. It's the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and the city will be sponsoring events here in Isaguat on April the 18th, which is a Saturday, and working with a variety of community partners to host an event. And there will also be a variety of activities happening throughout the month, so it's actually an Earth Month as well as an Earth Day activity. So some great things coming along there. The city is also, as you may know, a founding member of the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. And that's a group of 16 different cities, plus King County, plus the Port of Seattle. And this is a group that's providing leadership in the region on how we can move forward on climate. So the city's been a part of that. The group has some climate commitments that date back to, I believe it's 2014, and recently took a look at some of those commitments and made some changes, and we'll be bringing those forward for you to consider next month as well. So that's another piece that's kind of coming along on the horizon. And now I'll turn it over to Megan to cover the inventory update.
Great, thank you. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the 2017 Carbon Inventory Update. So carbon inventory quantifies greenhouse gas emissions in our city. So I'm going to talk a little bit about why that's important, the methodologies and data sources that were used to go into that, some of the trends between the different inventory years that we're seeing, as well as the details on the specific emission sources and how to reduce those. So starting with the importance of the inventory, this is something that we do once every five years. So the first inventory update that we had was in 2007, so this is our third round of that. In 2014, the city adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets. And so it's important to be able to look at our emissions and be able to track our progress towards those long-term goals. It's also great to be able to see what some of those emission sources are, so we're better able to inform our policies and programs, as well as the climate planning that we're going to be talking about tonight. The greenhouse gas emissions, as many of you know, is also worldwide, they're the highest they've been, and we're starting to see some impacts from climate change now. So it's important for us as a jurisdiction to look at the emissions that we have to provide some leadership and work to reduce those. So for the methodology, we do a community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory, looking at the emissions that take place within our jurisdictional boundaries, as well as those that are from electricity that's, or energy that's produced outside our boundary but we consume in the city. So there's three main sources that go into the inventory. The first is buildings, and the energy from that is from electricity and natural gas. So we receive that data from Puget Sound Energy. Next is transportation, so that's measured in terms of vehicle miles traveled. We work with Puget Sound Regional Council to get that data and track the emissions from that. And the third is waste, so we work with ecology to get our total amount of tons of material landfilled, recycled, and composted. I'm sorry, one more thing I wanted to mention on that with the map that you can see there. As you can probably imagine, over the course of a decade, oftentimes, data sources might change a little bit, or modeling techniques become a little bit better, so we're able to track those across our inventory. And we've updated each of the three inventory years so we can best compare our current emissions with those of the baseline. But this is just one example of that. The map here is from Puget Sound Regional Council. The top map is from 2007 and shows the model that they use to best track our vehicle miles. You can see that parts of the city, South Cove, Talis Highlands, isn't fully included there. So they've been able to update their modeling techniques to better match our jurisdictional boundaries. So that's kind of just one of the examples of how the data can change over that time.
Councilmember Hunt. Oh, Council President Hunt.
May I ask a question during the presentation?
Sure.
You prefer I save it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I wondered with the buildings, if you consider the building materials and embodied carbon? I know there's a lot of trends towards trying to move towards lower-carbon buildings.
We do not take that into account in the inventory itself, but it is something that we're looking at as we look to do our climate planning and take into account strategies we can work to reduce emissions. See, I'll be talking about, there's kind of different types of inventory, so this is mainly just looking at those kind of geographic emissions, but it is really important to recognize all the different sources, and the embodied carbon is definitely one that we'll be tracking. So here's a snapshot of our 2017 update. So the greenhouse gas emissions are measured in terms of metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. In 2017, about 38% of our emissions came from transportation, 62% from buildings, with the main sources being residential energy and commercial energy at about 30% each, and then industrial energy as well. And then waste is actually not included in this chart here because the emissions from waste are actually negative because of the benefits of composting and recycling. And I'll get into that a little bit more later. Here we see our GHG inventory trends over the last three inventory years. So the blue shows the emissions from transportation, and green is from buildings. So over the course of our three inventory years, our emissions have actually been going up about 5% over that time, so we're not on track to meet our 2020 climate goal. So our building emissions have actually been increasing 13% over that time, and transportation emissions have decreased 6%. And you can see there's a slight dip in the 2012 emissions there, and I'll get into a little bit about why that is. But even though we're not on track to meet our targets for total emissions, we are doing well on the per capita emissions. So the blue bar shows that our per capita emissions have gone down about 30%. And meanwhile, at the same time, our population has been increasing by 45%. So you can probably imagine, if we weren't able to keep those per capita emissions down, then the chart on the left would be going up a lot more steadily.
Thank you. The interesting thing about that is there was a, the benefit all happened early, and it's been, in terms of per capita, it's been fairly flat since then. Is there a particular set of things that we did between 2007 and 2012 that maybe we could point to to account for this? It isn't sort of a general downward trend, right?
Right.
It's sort of a step function.
I'm not able to exactly attribute things in that way. I think that there's been a lot of improvements in energy efficiency, energy codes, so some of that may have happened a little bit earlier. Also, as we get into kind of the transportation emissions, we'll see that emissions from vehicles improved, and that was, I think, a little bit stronger also between 2007 and 2012, so that might be one of the factors.
Thank you.
This is just another way to look at the per capita emissions, so a comparison across some areas in the region. So we are on track with King County at about 9.5 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per person. We are slightly higher than the city of Seattle. They also have a carbon-neutral utility, which I think factors into that some. We are less than both Washington State and the United States as a whole, but more than worldwide.
Megan, do we have any comparison on other regional cities? We have Seattle, but what about Redmond or Kirkland or?
Yeah, so.
Pier Bunch?
Several of those cities do do inventories. The kind of methodologies that each city uses varies, and that's true for these as well. We have aligned a lot more with King County, especially in this update this year, but we're not able to really compare apples to apples. But I don't have those numbers in front of me here what they are. I assume that they're probably pretty similar.
Great, thank you.
So this slide shows our total building energy use by electricity and natural gas. So here you can see that, in general, energy has been going up in most of those sectors across the three inventory years. There's a slight dip in commercial electricity in 2017, but there's also a larger increase in residential natural gas in 2017. So in previous inventory years, commercial energy used to be the biggest piece of the pie, but now this year, commercial and residential are about equal at 30%. So I think that's in part due to the kind of increased housing stock in the city, as well as that population growth, so those are now about equal.
Councilmember Walsh.
Can you go back? Yeah, that's fine. Do we have a sense of what percentage of the households and commercial locations in the city have natural gas versus electricity for heating and other areas?
On a whole, for the city, it's 28% is natural gas and 72% is electricity. And so I don't have it specifically by the different sectors, but more electricity, but some, it's still a good chunk of natural gas.
So then what I'm seeing here is if natural gas is only 28%, and yet the residential, well, is that, that's thermes, not greenhouse gas?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, this is thermes and kilowatt hours.
Thanks.
And then the next slide, we'll look at the emissions a little bit.
Councilmember Marts? No.
So here we see the total energy use, both by electricity and natural gas, and how that aligns with emissions. So if we look at the graph on the right first, it shows natural gas. So conversion from thermes to emissions there is pretty linear, so as we're going up in natural gas use, we're also going up in emissions. That's a little bit different for electricity. So electricity is, we receive that from Puget Sound Energy, and that is generated both by fossil fuel sources such as coal and natural gas, but also hydro and renewables such as wind. So each year, the fuel mix for Puget Sound Energy changes, so that shifts how our emissions are. So we talked a little bit about the dip in 2012, so that is primarily from the fact that there was less coal in Puget Sound Energy's fuel mix that year. So to illustrate that, I have a slide with, that has the fuel mix here for Puget Sound Energy. On the bottom, we see the different fuel types. If you look on the left-hand side, the, for coal, in 2007 and 2017, coal made up about 37%, but in 2012, it was just about 30%. So again, that, I think, is one of the reasons for that dip in 2012. Natural gas, you'll notice, has been increasing steadily in each of the inventory years. Hydro still makes up a good amount, a little bit less in 2017, but the fact that we do have hydro here in the Northwest, we, I think is one of the reasons why our per capita have hydro here in the Northwest, we, I think is one of the reasons why our per capita emissions are less in the Northwest in general, rather than compared to the rest of the U.S. I also want to mention here, so, we've talked about building emissions, so there's kind of two ways that we can reduce emissions from buildings. The first is to reduce the total energy use, so the total electricity and natural gas, and that can be done in ways such as energy efficiency, or looking at kind of stricter building codes for new developments, so a couple different ways to reduce that energy use. The other side is, to reduce emissions, is to reduce the carbon intensity of the energy supply. So that's how we were talking about, how the electricity mix has fossil fuels and renewables. So if we're able to reduce the amount of fossil fuels, and that would be another way of reducing emissions. And in 2019, the Washington State passed a Clean Energy Transformation Act, which makes electricity in the state fossil-fuel-free by 2045, so that will help us in achieving or reaching some of our goals in that way. So as we were talking about the mix between electricity and natural gas, so that's the electricity side, that that will be helpful for, but there's still that natural gas piece. So, you know, some jurisdictions look at either incentivizing retrofits or limiting natural gas in order to help that side of the equation and reduce emissions. Next, we have transportation. So the vehicle miles traveled is the main way of tracking emissions here, and that has gone up about 29% from 2007 to 2017. However, at the same time, emissions have actually decreased 6%. So that is mostly due to the fuel efficiency standards at the federal level, as well as improved technology in vehicles, so they get better gas mileage. So similar to buildings, there's two main ways we can reduce emissions from that, by, first, reducing the vehicle miles traveled, so reducing car trips, encouraging public transportation. The city has our salmon-friendly trips program, where we try to promote walking, biking. The other way is to reduce the carbon intensity of vehicle fuel. So again, at the federal level, some of the fuel efficiency standards are starting to be rolled back. At the state level, now, there's the Clean Fuel Standard, which is in the legislature, which would improve fuel efficiency of vehicles. There's also the Regional Clean Fuel Standard, which council adopted the resolution in support of last year. So there's different ways there. And then also, locally, we're able to kind of encourage more electrification of vehicles, electric vehicle infrastructure. For emissions from waste, so as I mentioned, these are negative mainly due to the benefits of composting and recycling, so the fact that we need less virgin materials to make products, we're able to have benefits there. And we've also been able to increase our diversion rate in the city. We've done a lot more education. More products are able to be recycled, so we're able to reduce our emissions even more. In 2010, the city passed a food packaging ordinance that required all packaging, all food packaging to be composted and recyclable, so we've been able to recycle and compost more and more. The other thing I want to mention here, which is on the slide, but is sequestration. So we haven't done a land-based inventory, where you look at kind of the carbon that's stored from trees, but as we know, we're surrounded by a lot of trees here in Issaquah, and they have many, many benefits, but one is storing carbon. So that is an important tool in fighting climate change as well. We're going to be hearing from our Parks Department a little bit more about some work they're doing around that and quantifying some emissions from that. So anything we're able to do to keep the trees that we have, restoration efforts, new plantings is another tactic.
Council President Hunt.
Could you clarify what without management practices is showing us?
Yes, yes, sorry. So in the green, the without management practices, it's just if we are landfilling everything, and then with management practices includes composting and recycling activities.
Okay, and does this account for that recycling programs are having more challenges as of late?
Not too much, I don't think. So this inventory update's from 2017, so I think that was maybe starting a little bit then, but I don't think it was really in full-fledged, so it is possible that that could change in the future.
Or is changed by now?
Or, yes. And we were able to look a little bit at 2018 data for some of these things, and it was pretty similar to 2017 data. So, you know, between each year, it's not necessarily changing a lot, but it could in that front.
Okay, thanks.
So last, I just wanted to mention that there are other types of inventories out there. So you'd mentioned embodied carbon, thinking about that. So this is a slide that shows King County's consumption-based emissions inventory. So that is looking at greenhouse gases by consumption. So here, you just, it just shows kind of another suite of actions that can be taken to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So for example, here, we're seeing that about 40% of emissions are from goods and food. So the city's done some work to reduce food waste, which can help reduce emissions, and then also programs such as promoting reuse and repair of items. So in, during Earth Month, we're going to be having a repair workshop out here hosted by King County, so that will allow people to come and bring, you know, simple clothing to be fixed, or electronics, so they don't have to go out and buy new things, which would be contributing more emissions. So this is just to show that there is, have a whole nother suite of options that aren't necessarily just building and transportation-related. And I think we'll be talking about all of those things as we get into our climate planning efforts.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. So, just a little bit, and I won't spend much time on this, and Megan actually covered this quite a bit, a little bit about climate mitigation as opposed to climate preparedness. And so, as Megan mentioned, essentially, thinking about mitigation as those measures that we can take in order to reduce emissions. So kind of reducing the impacts as kind of our various activities, and their contribution in the future. And essentially, there's approaches that look at either efficiency and reduction, reducing vehicle miles traveled, becoming more efficient with our buildings, or there's reducing the carbon intensity of the various fuels we're using. So lower carbon fuels for our vehicles, or electric vehicles to have a much lower carbon value than gasoline, switching from fossil-based fuels for electricity, such as coal and natural gas, to renewables. There's two parts of the equation, essentially, and they show up in a variety of different ways, as Megan mentioned. Climate preparedness, on the other hand, is thinking about the impacts as a result of climate change. So how do those impacts that are already starting to affect us, and that will continue to affect us regardless of what actions we take now? We already know that the impacts to our climate from our past activities will have an effect on us in the world, and particularly in the Northwest. The work that we do today is helping to avert future actions that are even further out. We do have some really great resources in the Pacific Northwest that are focused on climate resiliency. Resiliency is another word for preparedness, if you will, kind of the resiliency of the community to change and adapt to a changing climate. There is the Climate Impacts Group at the University of Washington, which does extensive work on modeling on a local level about the impacts of climate change in the Pacific Northwest, and how that shows up in a whole variety of resources. There's also a group that's called the Puget Sound Climate Collaboration Coalition, or Puget Sound Climate Preparedness Coalition, which the city recently joined, and that's essentially a collaboration of local government, utilities, and others that are really interested in working together to address climate preparedness in a kind of coordinated fashion, rather than doing things piecemeal. And so we'll be working with them to be thinking about cities' approach as well. So in terms of climate impacts, and I'm preparing for climate impacts, we know from the work of the Climate Impacts Group at the University of Washington, that it'll have impacts on these systems, on hydrology and water resources. That may mean things like declining snowpack, increased stream temperatures, lower minimum stream flows in the summertime. It could also result in increased variability in weather and rainfall events, so that may mean higher winter flows and flooding potential, such as what we've recently witnessed here in Issaquah. For the forests, we've seen, they're expecting changes in growth and distribution of trees, impacts from insects in forests, and potential for increase in wildfires. It's an area that particular concern for Issaquah, as we're right along that urban-wildland interface. We're also seeing some changes, we're hearing from foresters about changes in species, and certain species decline, which they're still working to understand what's happening to some of our native forest tree species. And as those die off, they increase the potential for wildfire and other impacts as well. We know that there are some impacts to species and ecosystems, both plants and animal species, and this includes endangered and threatened species as well. Along the coast, which is not so direct for Issaquah, but there are concerns about acidification and sea level rise. And also, they've looked at things like built infrastructure, the potential for increased damage and service disruptions, reduced asset life, higher operational costs, things like that. Agricultural impacts, in terms of pressures from pests and weeds and pathogens, and then also impacts on health, as we think about folks with respiratory illnesses and heat potential impacts. So, sorry for sounding so dire, but these are a lot of the impacts that they've identified. But the important thing is to recognize those and prepare for them. And so most likely, some of the more significant impacts for Issaquah will revolve around our stream flows, the potential for flooding, forest fire potentials, I mentioned.
Councilmember Michelle.
And then heat, yes.
Oh, didn't mean to interrupt you, but have they also included social impacts? Because, for example, just one example, immigration. If people are fleeing extreme heat, you know, to the south of us, are they looking at how these kinds of impacts would affect our social structures?
I think that's definitely a consideration, especially in, also immigration from other areas, which some islands are disappearing. And so there is the potential for that, those impacts. I don't think we know exactly what those will look like for Issaquah specifically, but that's certainly a consideration that's out there.
Councilmember Martsch.
So I had a question from somebody in the community the other day, kind of related to this, and it totally stumped me. They were asking me whether the rise of online shopping has had a carbon impact in terms of, you say, people, if you remove a certain number of times you drive into, in some distance to go buy something, if instead, there's a truck that's coming through your neighborhood and it drops something off at your house, how do you? They were sort of asking how to view the rise of online retailing in regards to carbon, and I had no clue what to say to them.
I think that's an excellent question. I recall there was a, there's a group at the University of Washington that looks at, I forget the name of the group, but they look at transportation and freight, and impacts in local communities. And I think some of their preliminary assessment of that was that there was not a net increase in pollution or carbon as a result of that. And part of it depends on the frequency of the smaller vehicles that are traveling around town, and kind of how many stops they're making. But that was my recollection of that, I can't say definitively, but it's a great question.
And then the question for the future is, what will aerial delivery of do? Because it's a different power, it's from different power sources, and it's got different distribution mechanisms, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, and as fleet efficiencies improve and things like that as well, for sure. Important to note, the city has a long history of a variety of actions related to climate. There's some great examples of leading projects, such as Z Home, which was the first net-zero multifamily project in the United States, Fire Station 72, which was, I think at the time, the most efficient fire station in the country, had received several awards from ASHRAE, which is the kind of standards organization for heating and ventilation engineering design. We've, council authorized the purchase of 100% renewable electricity for about 95% of city electricity, operations for electricity. Megan mentioned our salmon-friendly trips program, and focus on demand management, both to help reduce congestion, but also reduce air quality impacts. We've talked a little bit about the climate collaboration, some efforts such as Solarize, to increase access to PV panels for our residents here in town. Our Public Works Operations Department has been doing retrofits of our streetlights. The vast majority of them are now LED. Same is true for our signals and peg crossings. There's been a lot in the long history on restoration and acquisition of open space. And then, coming up is, your Eastside Fire and Rescue has been doing some work on thinking about how to prepare for the potential for fire in the community, and they're working with our emergency operations, our emergency management folks, to start to educate the community about a program called Fire Wise, and thinking about preparations for what that might look like. And then also with our Stormwater Master Plan, which is currently underway, they're starting to take a look at how climate may factor into some of the stormwater design considerations and standards as well. And that's true also, as we're starting to take a look at some of the development standards, although I think that piece is a little bit earlier on. From a policy standpoint.
Councilmember Hunt.
On the last one, do you take into consideration that people might buy into different PSE programs that have a different carbon footprint? So, because you put up Green Direct 100% renewable energy, I'm wondering if you are also accounting somehow for that people might be buying into those different PSE programs that are 100% renewable, and things like that?
We do have some data in that. The PSE has a program called, it's the Green Power Program, and I don't recall the participation rate, it's, but the number's not huge, I would say, but there is a little bit of an impact. The nice thing about Green Direct was it's a direct, essentially a different form of a power purchasing agreement, so the city could look at our overall energy. There are some other large corporations in the region that have also purchased as part of that, too. From a policy foundation standpoint, our primarily, primary policies are within the comprehensive plan, and there's some fairly robust policies in there. We have, as Megan mentioned, some specific greenhouse gas reduction targets with specific years that are outlined, so that piece is in place. There's a policy which is about encouraging innovative climate solutions, which advance the city towards a carbon-neutral community, that's straight from the land use goal F that's in there. Most of the policies, however, are climate mitigation-focused, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's a good set of policies which are guiding actions, and that, those policies talk about a variety of things, from education incentives, policies, regulations. Some of the cities work on advocating for statewide and regional efforts, thinking about the city's own operations and infrastructure, new development mitigation, renewable energy, and things like that. And also, transportation is the other piece. As we take a look at some of these pieces, and understand the information from taking a look at our policies, as well as from the carbon inventory, there are a few gaps. So we do know that we are not making progress to meet our goals that are established within our comprehensive plan. We also know that while we have good policies related to climate mitigation, we don't have any policies related to preparedness. And so that's a consideration as well. And the other piece is that we, while we have the good policies, we don't have a single kind of cohesive framework for saying, you know, here's how we take a collection of actions, how we might prioritize them, decide which ones are most important to implement at any given point in time, based on cost-benefit and other factors. And at the same time, we also know that there's a changing landscape, and so even though we do a certain amount of planning, there are some pretty dramatic changes that might be happening at the state level. So for example, in the past year, we had a pretty landmark legislation with Clean Energy Transformation Act, which will clean up our electrical supply, that has a pretty significant impact on our carbon emissions. There was also a piece of legislation related to clean buildings, and that established some standards for existing buildings, and has some performance requirements for how existing buildings need to improve their performance. So those are pretty important things that have happened in the last couple, last year. And so kind of paying attention to that landscape, and being able to kind of be agile and adjust to some of those changing conditions is an important consideration as well. And then the other piece is that we have implemented a number of measures for the city locally, and thinking about our own operations, but we don't have a specific target for our own municipal operations, and we also haven't done a specific inventory for our specific operations. So we have that for the community, but not necessarily for the city as a corporate entity, if you will. So going forward, one of the things that we're proposing for consideration is to think about how we might go forward and progress with climate planning, to address some of those gaps, and to address some of the interests on the part of the community. And what we're suggesting is that, given that level of interest, that we work with the community, and we ask them, and how the city might want to proceed with this. And there could be a variety of different outcomes from that. We believe it's important to cast a wide tent, in terms of who to include in that conversation. We know there's some, several organizations locally that are very interested in this. We believe it should include energy providers, businesses, neighborhoods, a variety of folks that could be a part of the conversation. that could be a part of the conversation, academic organizations, land managers, et cetera, to help and provide the city with some feedback and thought. And that's important to hear from the community and also to build that interest and stakeholding in that work so that we can be partners in that effort. We know that the city cannot do this effort on its own, and so, having some of that feedback into that process, I think from the beginning, really helps with that. In terms of some other options, if the council would like to proceed with some planning efforts, we could choose to rely on our existing policy framework for making some decisions going forward, or we could also pursue a modified approach based on feedback that we received from you tonight. In terms of timing, if we were to proceed with a community convening to discuss climate, we would propose that we work in partnership with one or more organizations to plan and host a convening, and that we would be able to assemble that work group and have a spring convening in the second quarter. The objective would be to host that convening, get some information and recommendations out of that convening, and then report that back to the city council towards the end of the second quarter so that you could take those under consideration for next steps. So, just looping back around in terms of the direction that we would appreciate receiving is some feedback on whether to proceed at this point forward with some planning on climate and preparedness, and then also the proposed approach for working with the community.
City Administrator Bob Kowits.
Thank you. Great presentation. We have heard, I've heard a lot from members of the council, members of the community that we're not doing enough. And so, what you've heard tonight, in addition to the climate update, is, I think, a pivot for us, in that we need to be more engaged with residents. This is an issue that's very important to people. As we have talked to members of the council and members of the community, the one caveat, which David didn't touch on, but he's been the biggest waiver of red flags, yellow flags, is that we're not proposing to do lots more planning. That there's not lots more planning needed, but we need to go to the community and get a sense of what planning is needed, what pieces are needed, and what planning can we do while we're actually doing things. And so, I wanted to leave you with that little caveat, that this is not a proposal for a three-year planning effort to come up with all these wonderful best practices, and we'll get started in five years. That's not what we're saying. We're saying, let's talk to the community, let's get a good understanding of what the priorities are, let's see what component parts may need some additional thought and discussion, but let's focus on the doing. So, I want to thank Megan and David for an excellent presentation, but to kind of put that little explanation point on the back of the presentation, because David's been leading the charge of that concern, and I wanted to make sure that you knew that we think we get it. Thanks.
David, Megan, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I agree. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I noticed in the materials, no additional resources, financial resources would be needed for this next proposed effort of convening the community. And I'm asking you to explain, please, explain that a little more. The reason I'm asking is because typically, in my experience, what we get is if we're going to start an effort, then we hear that there's more resources that are needed towards that effort. And so, it occurred to me that maybe, well, I already had that planned for in the work plan, but I just wanted you to explain that a little more. Thanks.
Thank you for that. So, what was articulated in the staff report is that that very, then, the very next step of going out to the community and working with them to ask them, how would, how would, how do you think we should proceed with these next steps? And, you know, for example, if the community felt like it was really important to develop a fully-fledged climate action plan, that's not something that we have programmed within our budget. There could be some technical analysis associated with that. There's a certain amount of facilitation. We probably could do the vast majority of that in-house, but there's some resources that might be required. That's not currently budgeted. Climate planning is not in our current work program, so that's part of the request here is, shall we proceed with that? The work of doing a convening for one or two meetings with the community is something that we can do. We are anticipating a convening of the community to talk more about environmental stewardship, and so, this fits right in line with that conversation. So, that part, we can certainly do. If the recommendations were to point to a specific action that might require some resources or consulting resources or something else, or some expenditure on the part of the city, that's also not in the budget. So, I just thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll, oh, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. About the convening, first and foremost, I love the idea. I think that's awesome. And I also want to thank you and the whole department for, I've heard from many people out in the community who are active in climate advocacy, that you've met with them and heard from them, and they feel like they've been heard, and clearly, they have through this presentation, so thank you very much. I wanted to ask about the convening, and you had said that that would kind of guide our discussions, or we would hope a set of recommendations would come out of that convening. Would there be some sort of, I mean, can you speak to the vision of the convening a little bit more? Would there be like a moderator who would help guide that discussion? Would it be a free-for-all kind of discussion with a bunch of sticky notes that people are, little dots that people are putting on white pieces of paper? Or what are you thinking?
I think, for starters, I think we're anticipating working with some community groups to help shape that agenda. I think it will be something that will have an agenda. The intent is not to come out with a laundry list of specific actions that the city should fund and take as next step. It's really to think about, how should we approach the next steps of the climate work? That next step, I think, will start to outline, how do we go forward? That will be presented as a summary of the convenings to the city council, and we would work to lay out some options in terms of how that might be able to proceed. So, as an example, it could say, we believe that, or the group believes that it's important for the city to assemble a task force to take a look at this issue. That would be more along the lines of kind of a more dedicated climate action plan, but that could be the approach, and then council would have an option of considering whether or not to adopt it. Or it could be setting up some other frameworks that would allow for action to occur on a shorter timeframe, but we're not anticipating that this would be a big, long laundry list of must-dos, so.
Anything else? All right, we'll move into public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council on this topic today?
David, Steve?
How are we doing it? We're, Cody in there? David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Yes, we got a lot of policies, we got a lot of plans, we need implementation, and that's certainly a strong message from those of us involved in these issues. The idea of using Rivers and Streams Board, maybe expanding it, maybe get some forestry-type people and some of those kinds of other sciences represented besides just the rivers and the fish and all, would be a very good group to help evaluate city policies when we're going through chapters 18, 16, some of those kinds of things. Those people could be very helpful. Birthday will be a big deal this year, so taking advantage of the publicity about that and the interest out there, and merging our convening into something with that would be great. If you want to, I guess, one of my biggest issues and concerns I have is when I look up and see Tiger Mountain there, and summer, when you see those people that can jump off Pooh Pooh Point and suddenly go up. That wind in the afternoon coming down the valley, north wind up, if we get a fire loose at the base of Tiger Mountain, it's going to be a real tough situation. And I think we need to be working on our forest issues and more with volunteers, being more accountable to be out looking, aware of problems, especially some of the illegal camping sites, which almost, I've hardly ever seen an illegal camp that didn't have some kind of burn tent, burn tarp, or even fires that got away from them. So, that's a concern for sure. Let's think about how we can get more volunteers and stewardship working on this. Thank you for the good presentation tonight, and I have a feel, as many of you have met at my house with my wife and some of the climate action people, that we got a lot of people ready to go, and we're getting very positive feedback from the mayor, city administrator, the staff we've met with, and the council members, so thank you.
Thank you, David. Steve? Yeah, that's a one-way street. Traffic coming.
Hello, city council members of the audience. So, I'd like, I guess, overall, this agenda had a lot of linked items that seemed to flow each other together, and that was something really good to see, that there's a lot of things that were later done and tied together. A lot of my comments, I have 15 tabs for each topic, but I just wanted to commend or link several things together. I agree, there needs to be a sense of urgency on this topic. We don't need to talk about it, we don't need to study it, we need to act. I'd like to have CU put policy that says, we're going to advocate for these things and not just talk about them, what we can do, convene, but let's start acting and implementing policy. We just had a really bad rain season, atmospheric, we're kind of in our vocabulary. We need some actions. I'd like to see the Rivers and Streams Board maybe expanded to be more of environmental policy overall. I'll link things like zoning, building height, covering impermeable surfaces. There's a lot of things that could tie into this whole area and how they're related. We don't take cohesive look. I think something in every household is a tube of toothpaste. We squeeze it a little bit here, we squeeze it a little bit there, it goes in different directions. That applies to Shoreline Management Act, it applies to building code, zoning, energy We can only take so many impacts, so please try to think cohesively as a system as we go through this, and let's not delay any more than we need to, to make the changes. We're not meeting our goals between 2020, 2030, 2050. If we keep talking about it, we're not going to see the change or be the change we want to happen in the world. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else?
Growth Management Act put the city of Issaquah in an awkward position. We had been a very small town, we had lots of trees, and we had the fish, and then we were told you have to urbanize. And during this whole push, we have cut down a gargantuan number of trees, and the push has been to meet the growth targets that we need. Our impervious surface ratios have gone up 80%, 90%, always with the caveat that our tree retention code and our landscape code is going to offset that 80% and 90% impervious surface. Unfortunately, what's been happening is instead, we have been removing all of the trees with our new urban codes, and we don't know if they're being planted anywhere else. And then, we're using a stormwater manual at its very minimums to manage the stormwater that we have. And as we have always flooded, because we are the floodplain from the mountains, we are supposed to flood. It is the nature of Issaquah to flood. This is not a surprise. We, then again, flood all of the man-made things that have been built, some of them the old ones, because the new ones are higher and they have accommodated and pushed the water other places. So, now, all of the sudden, we have this urgency to go backwards and accommodate for all of the things that we so urgently built because we were mandated that. And we have our salmon streams that flow through town, and I remember sitting here with Forterra. Forterra is saying, the way to go is you build up, you have to build up, and we need you and the urban growth boundary to have these stunning impervious surface ratios so that you can be the people that are the most efficient housers of businesses and humanity. And it was like, but, we also house the Chinook salmon and the most important water bodies that go to Lake Samamish and feed an entire system. So, for years and years and years, we have deprioritized that system. So, I'm a little cynical that after years and years and years of sort of mouthpeacing the idea that this time, we're going to actually protect the environment, that we will. We have a new code coming on. Our code needs to say, our tree canopy and our trees and our tree retention are so important that they are a priority. The way we treat our water and our fish habitat and our wildlife habitat are so important that they are a priority. And together, we will house humanity and businesses and our fish, water, and habitat so they all can thrive, not just so that the humans can thrive. And unless the council is willing to make this paradigm shift, it will not happen, because staff will not be able to get anything done unless you all tell them clearly and concretely that this must happen, and it must happen now. If you say, well, you know, maybe, if it's possible, if there's potential, it will not get done. And we are weary to the bones of trying to make it happen. So, unfortunately, because we are in this linchpin position, it is going to be upon you all to fulfill this role of finally creating the Issaquah that it can be if the very first thing, we can get our comprehensive plan to say that development does not work against the environment like it says now. They work cooperatively together to make Issaquah awesome. So, I think you can do it, but you're going to have to be oh-so freaking clear. Thanks.
Thanks, Connie. All right. Any other comments on this one this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. We have been asked for some direction from Megan and David to help them move forward. Their direction is to provide feedback on whether to proceed with the planning on a climate impacts to natural resources and the community, and to provide feedback on a community-based approach. Councilmember Walsh, would you like to get us going?
Action, 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 or maybe convening, action, action, action would be my preference. And I very much appreciate City Administrator Bob Kowits reiterating what he has heard out of the Office of Sustainability about not wanting to sit down and have a plan that does not create action. I think we can very easily look at other communities that have created plans that include actions and take those against our community and the members of the community that want to convene around this and say, does this fit? What else do you come up with? And then, come up with a plan and, or come up with actions and do them. And I think we have the political will and the community will to do so, so I am encouraged to see that commence.
Excellent. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Plus one to Councilmember Walsh. I also want to echo the strong support for the minimal but sufficient planning to get us going and to make sure that we are using the, there's a lot of enthusiasm in the community so that we're directing that community enthusiasm to start getting things done. So, I want to echo that. I have a few additional comments. One is that I do see a role for Rivers and, River and Streams Board here, and I think that is a very important piece. They could play an important piece in linking some of the policy implications with the changes that we need to make for climate action. And one other thing is, you mentioned the Fire, Fire Wise program. I think this is a big concern for our community going forward. This is the area where I think we're going to have to continue to make changes and make changes in terms of becoming more aware of fire risks. And one resource that I wanted to mention is that King Conservation District is also doing Firewise, fire protection, fire preparedness work for private homeowners. So that would be another good resource for folks interested in that. I saw, as far as us and our targets, you know, not on track is kind of an understatement, I think. So we have a lot of change to make. I would like to see us in the future consider more holistically all of the embodied carbon, all of the construction, all of the different sources of carbon that are in the community that weren't included in this. And I saw that even without considering embodied carbon and without considering building materials and construction, buildings are still making up the majority of our carbon emissions. So I think looking at it more holistically will allow us to better consider different ways to make a better impact. And additionally, all of these things are potentially linked, right? So if we have the Clean Energy Transformation Act and we have cleaner sources of electricity that will allow the electrification of transportation and of buildings to have a bigger impact and reducing our carbon emissions. So if we can think about linking these and having more of a potential impact, I think that would also be helpful and potentially meaningful. The timing seems a little, you know, if you could speed it up, that would be great. If not, then as long as we get to that planning as fast as possible. I mean, as long as we get through that planning as fast as possible and get to action, that would make me happy. And I wanted to also just thank you for working with the community on this. And thanks to all the members of the community that have brought this issue to the forefront and continue to push for climate action.
Councilmember Goodman.
Well, I can't say it any better, so I won't try. I support the comments that have been made already and thank the community members who have been so active and strongly support the convening and acting. Thanks.
Councilmember De Michelle.
I agree with all the comments that have been made. Yes, proceed, go forward. I really like the idea of it being a collaboration between community members and the staff and working that way through a collaborative effort with our community. In the spirit of let's get things done, I'm going to ask the question, why don't we just have the proposal brought to us at a future city council member that we expand rivers and streams? Does that really need to go through a community conversation, or can we just do it? So.
City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Thank you for raising the issue of Rivers and Streams. We kind of mentioned it in passing tonight. It's my sense that we need to go to the group and ask them that question.
Ah, okay.
So they have not met, I don't think, since November. They have not met regularly in a very long time. We have a meeting scheduled for March. We're going to propose monthly meetings for a little while versus twice monthly meetings. We need to get a sense of who's still willing to come to meetings. I know that David's had some difficulty reaching members. I think we've done a fine job of alienating the nice folks that are members of that group. And I've promised meetings before, and many of them are tired of that. So I think it may take us a little bit of time to reconstitute the groups. I think are all up for reappointment. I think we were just talking about this the other day, April 30th, if memory serves. So it may take us 60 days, 90 days to get all this squared away. But I would think that it would make sense to come back to you soon with their thoughts and feedback on what a new charge would be. And so it's our priority, David and I are working on this. David's taken over the staffing of Rivers and Streams. So we'll get it done. But I'd much rather we go to the group, whoever's remaining, and ask them the question first.
All right. I totally agree with that. Thank you for the clarification. But I do echo the desire to see some action as soon as possible. So, but I agree, that approach sounds much more appropriate for the group. So at any rate, proceed, proceed, proceed. Yeah.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yeah, so I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think community-based approach is important. You know, I also echo the sort of outcomes-focused effort, what's going to, what's going to come out of this that's going to be tangible. You know, for me, it's about the carbon. I think that, I applaud the climate change groups that are focusing the conversation around the impact of the carbon that we're putting into the atmosphere. It's interesting, you know, we get, the question about how we manage growth in the area is an important one, and you and I are both GMPC, GMPB, you know. It would be great to get some information, not necessarily generated by the city, but you know, in the ongoing conversation about the Growth Management Act and how we as a region are responding to growth, it'd be interesting to understand the role of densification versus carbon emissions. I come from the Twin Cities, which is a, which is a, which is a great metro and very forward-thinking in a lot of ways, but doesn't have the prescribed growth that we have. And you know, they're six rings deep in suburbs. And so you can have a place like Eden Prairie, which has large parkland tracks through the city, and they can do that because the area is six rings deep in suburbs. And so how do we, there's immense pressures on the GMA right now because communities like ours are suffering with our density. And I would love to understand if in fact, carbon is what it's about, to the extent to which we are or are not dealing with carbon better than community, than regions that aren't, that don't have the growth management that we have. And the final thing I'll say, as I, as a homeowner adjacent to open space, I'm keenly enthusiastic to see a larger Firewise effort here. But I will say, part of Firewise is cutting down trees. It's creating a buffer around your home that the folks in the Highlands and Talis are lucky enough to not have completely surrounded by dense trees. But those of us who are, you know, it involves cutting down trees. So have to make sure that, you know, Firewise is often, on the dry side of the state, it's in areas where creating buffers around your properties don't necessarily involve cutting down as many trees. And I'd be curious, as we move forward, to try to see if we can, if, you know, it just strikes me that if carbon is the thing they're most concerned about, and yet I want to keep my neighborhood safe against wildfires and urban wildland interface fires, how to make sure that if, by properly implementing Firewise, we don't just, you know, denude Squawk Mountain and Cougar Mountain of its trees. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Walsh, I'm going to come to you second. Councilmember Hall, you haven't had a chance to speak. Anything that you'd like to add right now, or you can pass?
I mean, ditto everyone here. Also just, I was just going to save this for later, but might as well add it now. I would like to advocate that there be a youth voice in this convening as well. There's been a strong youth advocacy within the Issaquah School District surrounding climate, and I'd just like to make sure that we include the people who will be inheriting our city in this conversation.
Councilmember Walsh.
So just on that Rivers and Streams Board idea, are we, we're in the middle of recruiting right now with applications due at the end of February, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would we be, if someone was interested in applying for kind of a greater climate action or environmental stewardship board, would it make sense for them to apply and check the box toward Rivers and Streams to be considered in a conversation about that?
I think any community members that are interested in these issues should apply for Rivers and Streams.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
On that note, I think we should open up the vacancies for the alternate positions then.
Are they, are they not, they're vacant, so we're not recruiting for them? Okay, well, we'll do that.
I just have a couple of thoughts, and they sound a lot like what I've heard from my colleagues here. Implementation urgency needs to be at the top of the list. I think you've got that. I think we need to focus on reversing the trends. I think it's great to be able to slow them. It's great to be able to point to a reduction in per capita carbon emission, but I would really, our goal is to reduce overall total carbon emission. So we work to do. The fire danger is very real. We look a lot like Paradise, California. And I think we've had a number of conversations with Eastside Fire about that. I think Councilmember Marsh's comment about the trade-offs between forestation and forest fire prevention is really a fascinating one. And then finally, we have a very active community, and mobilizing them is probably one of the best ways to move this forward and to leverage that resource to make a big difference. And then I guess I just said finally, but I'm saying finally for the final time. And that is, this is very much an integrated system. And so we need to approach all of these actions that we're taking. And you know, we heard during public comment that we are talking about a lot of things tonight that are very highly interrelated. And so as we move forward with all of these initiatives, how we bring them together and how we leverage what we're doing with garbage collection versus what are we doing with carbon, these all need to be brought together as a cohesive, comprehensive whole. So Megan and David, did you get what you needed in terms of feedback?
We did. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Well, thank you and great presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next on tonight's agenda is ID 0609, Green Issaquah Funding Opportunities Forest Carbon Credit Program, presented by Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Service Director, with Mark McPherson from City Forest Credits. And welcome, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Appreciate it. Pardon me as I get transitioned here. So this evening, we are, I think, going to have a good transition here in that we are going to talk about one, I think, actionable item that we've been addressing and looking at, specific to the topic, very important topic we just had. And this really, I think, centers around an opportunity we have in coalescing our Green Issaquah initiative that we launched last year. And really, that's one piece of how do we continue to improve how we steward and how we manage our city forests? But taking that work and aligning it with this burgeoning carbon credit market to see if there's opportunity for us to tap into work that we're currently doing and generate some revenue for the city that then we can turn around and continue to do more important work. So what you're going to be hearing tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to hand this over to Mark. We've got a lot of information in this slide deck. I think for the sake of time, we're going to, I think, focus on some of the important high-level stuff. You've had a chance to look at the slide deck. Certainly, if you have questions as we go along, we will certainly stop and answer those. But real quickly, what we're hoping to achieve tonight is to introduce you to this idea of a pilot that we want to pursue this year. We are, we are already in our work plan planting 10,000 trees as part of Forest Succession through a grant that we received last year. We would love to take that work that we're doing, the planting of those 10,000 trees, and present it to the carbon market and see if there's opportunity for us to generate some revenue with that work that could then incubate and create more work and opportunities. So I think with that introduction, I will, I will turn it over to the expert. We've had a chance to meet with Mark. We, Shante Floriani, who's our park planner, who will be leading this project, and I have met with Mark and the City Forest Credit Team, and have learned a lot about carbon credits. So with that, Mark, I hand it over to you.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I can advance right here. Right there. Yes, thank you very much. So you know, there's a growing wave of interest in how we keep our cities green and healthy and equitable. Trees are a critical part of that. Question is, how do we pay for it? And I don't need to tell you that city budgets are strained all over the country. And so generating private sector funding for our city forests, that's our targeted goal. So we're a nonprofit organization. We're foundation-funded. We started with the Bullet Foundation, Laird Norton, some local foundations. Our funding sources have since grown to the Flora Family Foundation, Menlo Park, Doris Duke Charitable Foundation, because there's so much interest in this issue of how to keep cities, again, healthy, green, and equitable, and how do we fund that? So we were developed specifically to bring our city forests into the carbon market. Carbon credits have been around for quite a while, but not done for urban areas. So first, we laid a foundation, we developed a board that has a couple local members here. Ericson worked at Forterra for a while and then moved to Warehouser. Skip Swenson is at Forterra. But also the national organizations that are involved in urban forestry. And that ranges from the Nature Conservancy, American Forest Arbor Day Foundation. Those are the main players in urban forestry. And then one of the key elements to any carbon program is a carbon protocol. And a carbon protocol is really just the rulebook that projects have to follow in order to earn carbon credits. And one of the key elements of a carbon protocol is to have a drafting group that has key stakeholders and key scientists. So we spent a lot of time developing a national group that ranged from the Climate Program Manager in Austin, Texas, watershed people from Chesapeake Bay, local people here from the Northwest, including transportation utility people, private arborists, scientists, a whole range of people who could develop an urban forest carbon protocol. So carbon credits have been around for quite a while, but city forest carbon has been left out of that equation. And you might ask, why, given how valuable the city forests are? The key question, the key answer to that really is that the carbon world as it exists has been focused only on one thing, which is CO2, and only on very large volumes. So they want 50,000 acres of forest land. And that's all great. That's a wonderful goal, and that does store a lot of carbon, but it leaves out smaller volume carbon sinks like our cities. So you, I may be preaching to the choir, but it's very clear to us that this connection of city forests with private sector funders is really important. The carbon buyers want credits in cities, they're not able to get them. And the reason for that is twofold. Trees do a lot of things other than store carbon in cities. They reduce stormwater, they improve air quality, they have bird pollinator wildlife habitat, they promote in riparian areas forest and stream health, they conserve energy or save energy costs. So carbon buyers want the credits in cities, and of course, many of their customers and employees work in cities. So they want that presence in cities. Credits also then give the cities help funding their trees. And then we all get greener, healthier, more equitable cities. So it's a quick background slide. This just shows that there's a lot of money being spent on carbon credits. There's a lot of money spent on related causes. And again, our goal is to tap into those existing sources of funding. So here's an example of some of the programs that have started under our protocols. Austin, Texas, you know, every place has its own issues and its own priorities. In Austin, they've had a lot of issues with water quality and water quantity. Their riparian or their stream and riverside forest buffers are really degraded. So they are focusing on riparian reforestation. The city of Austin is buying those credits because the city has a carbon reduction goal that's very aggressive, and they're spending taxpayer dollars on buying credits. Currently, they're buying credits on one of the three big registries, and those credits can be from landfills, industrial gas plants thousands of miles away. And because they're spending taxpayer dollar on the credits, they really want locally sourced credits. So that's one example. I could spend a lot of time talking about all these different programs. They're all wonderful, they all have their own story, they all represent very much local priorities. Because our protocols set up the rules for how they can earn the credits, but the local people determine the species, the communities, the project types, you know, how they actually implement their projects. King County, I'll mention just because they're, again, they're a neighbor here. As you know, they have a land conservation initiative, so their focus is on preserving open space. They set up the country's first forest carbon program. So they are crediting both their rural and wildland carbon, and they're working with us to store their carbon in cities and towns. Shoreline did a project that was funded by Bank of America that was implemented by the Mountains of Sound Greenway, whom I'm sure many of you know. So here's a couple, two slides that just give you the quick structure of how this works. If there's a tree project, let's say it's in Issaquah, you dotted line to the right, you have to follow our protocol, CFC is City Forest Credits. Again, those are the rulebooks. They lay out things like where are the projects, how long do they have to be, and very specifically They lay out things like where are the projects, how long do they have to be, and very specifically, how do you quantify the CO2 storage and the co-benefits? So quantification and have that done with a scientific method is a very important part of all carbon crediting. Then if you follow the protocols, we issue credits back to the project. So the credits go to the project. And then step two, the project sells those credits to the buyer. The money flows directly from the buyer to the project. It doesn't come through us. We charge a small fee. Again, we're nonprofit, so we are not in this to make money. We're in this to advance the work. Now this slide, it's, there's too much information to go over here. This was just a, in effect, an income statement that we prepared based on the planning of 28 acres, certain project type. So we estimated the total credits could be issued on that. We estimated a price per ton based on what the city of Austin pays for credits, and it produces this income statement. And again, I'd be happy to answer more questions later. I'll move through this slide now, and then I'm always available to answer questions. And of course, we're just right down the road in Seattle. So the demand, let's just talk about that a little bit. One thing that we've seen, talking to companies everywhere, is they really want quantified values. And one of the key innovations that we brought to this is that our scientists have developed a unique carbon plus credit. And we call it plus because they are able to include with the metric ton of CO2, stormwater runoff reductions, air quality, and energy-saving benefits. So those are all quantified in with the credit. It's a unique bundled credit. So again, the early buyers and investing partners were those four entities. We are in touch with the large national carbon portfolio advisors. That's a fancy word for brokers. There are carbon brokers who actually do most of the carbon buying for the large carbon buying corporations. Microsoft, for example, hires a broker called Natural Capital Partners, and that Natural Capital Partners essentially puts together a portfolio of credits for Microsoft. And what they do when they assemble these portfolios is they usually have a pyramid structure, and they have at the base pretty inexpensive but legitimate carbon credits. And then they layer in more so-called charismatic credits, like forest credits. So Microsoft, for example, bought some forest credits from Indonesia, and they were called charismatic because they had orangutan habitat. And again, that's all wonderful. That's great. What we hear from the brokers is they get inquiries all the time, can we get credits in cities? And these credits in cities will be lower volume, they'll be much higher priced, but they will be at the top of the pyramid. So they will be kind of the cherry on top of the sundae as they assemble these portfolios for the companies. Local buyers, you know, there are local buyers. King County's first purchaser of the city credits was a fishing company based in Kirkland. And they had just commissioned the first green fishing vessel in the Bering Sea. They wanted to take the lead in moving the Bering Sea fishery to a cleaner, more green fleet, and they wanted to lead by example. And they actually found us. We referred them to King County because they wanted to get, again, locally sourced credits in an area where they operate. So again, there's too much material here to go over in detail. I'll make you move us past the first three bullets to the part in bold because this uses a little bit of jargon, climate jargon, but it does capture what is really unique about our city forests, which is that they are the bridge. They connect that global atmospheric benefit of the carbon storage because the carbon storage in city trees, trees pull carbon out of the atmosphere. That's a benefit to the atmosphere. But the local trees also deliver these very local mitigation and resiliency benefits. They reduce stormwater. They improve air quality. They provide the bird wildlife habitat. Depending on the communities where they're planted, they can also provide significant social equity benefits and clear human health benefits from trees. We are, as a matter of fact, now just putting the finishing touches on a Tree Equity and Human Health Impact Scorecard. We asked the scientists if they could include in the credit not just the carbon, not just the ecosystem values, but health and equity values. They said the science isn't there yet to put that into the credit, but we've developed the first metrics-based way to describe and demonstrate the equity and human health impacts of urban forest projects. This is just one table that we wanted to include here. This shows the co-benefits. And if you start on the upper left, you'll see ecosystem services. And if you go down that list, you'll see rain interception, which is one component of stormwater. Trees have two reservoirs of stormwater. One is in the canopy, one is in subsurface conditions. This just captures the canopy, so it's very conservative. Air quality, energy savings is further down. And if you move over to the column, that is, the first column to the right says total dollars. These are the costs to manage or treat the avoided costs of these ecosystem values. So as you can see, the main value in this particular climate zone, in this particular project area, is in the stormwater runoff reduction. And that $39,000 is the cost to manage that amount of stormwater per year. So we ran those numbers through 50 years, so let's assume the trees are there for 50 years. It's going to generate, in the very top line, over $1 million of avoided costs for the This is a workflow. This is a little more granular. It really is what Jeff and his colleagues would have to do to comply with the protocol to earn the credits. And timing and next steps, I'll let Jeff take over there. So thank you very much. Happy to answer questions. And again, very close by, so happy to come here in my zero emissions car and talk to you. It's much better than flying to Austin, Texas.
That's great, Mark. Yeah, so real quickly to wrap up before we open up for Q and A. So here we are tonight. Right now, we are tentatively scheduled to come back to you March 2nd with a request to proceed with an application. And that application would be, like I said in the introduction, these 10,000 trees that we are planting. We're planting whether we do this or not. We would love to submit an application, work through these protocols, and really pilot that work to see what it produces. So that request would come to you March 2nd. We would begin working through, well, we would be completing our work, completing the plantings through this year. We would estimate as we go through the protocols and the application process that those credits, initial credits would then be ready to be issued to market in 2021. So with that, interested to hear if this is something you're interested in exploring.
All right. Questions for Mark and Jeff? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Quick question about would the plan or would the protocol change what you would otherwise do for Green Issaquah, having to follow the protocol?
For Green Issaquah, which is larger, are you saying for these, planting these 10,000 trees?
I'm wondering if having, if this changes the plans that you would have otherwise had for any part of Green Issaquah if you have to follow the protocol? Like, do you expect that it's going to change what you would have done?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I have to admit, I had to read through this agenda packet two or three times. I think it is a fascinating subject, and so I just want to be really clear about it so I'm truly understanding it. So first and foremost, I love this idea of bringing better focus on smaller, more urban carbon sinks and putting a value on that for the community. But when I was reading it, at least the first one and a half times, maybe I'm almost there, I'm about 80% there, I was scratching my head on why the heck businesses would want to do this. So is this a, I mean, essentially in my head, I'm seeing this as kind of a reimbursement program for the city and kind of PR for businesses to be able to earn credits and say how eco-friendly they are and how they're lowering their carbon footprint, being mindful of their carbon footprint would, is that accurate in your sense?
I think it's fair to say that different companies have different goals with this. So Microsoft is a unique situation. They really, they went carbon neutral in 2011, I think. And they were really focused partly because they have activist employees that are putting pressure on them to take climate action. They also felt that in time, there may be carbon regulation, and they thought, let's get ahead of that curve. Let's set our own internal carbon price. Let's make every division responsible for their own emissions. And if they don't mission, they get taxed. It comes out of their budget. So they drove that through every division in the whole company. So that was, for them, I think it was partly connecting with employees, connecting with customers, being perceived as a leader in their field, and then getting ahead of what they saw probably as inevitable regulation at some point. Fisherman's Finest, opposite end of the spectrum, you know, a small, local company. And they contacted me probably two years ago. And I, the first time I met with them, they said, yeah, we're a Bering Sea fishing company, and we own quota. You may know how they do the fishery up there. It's very managed. You can't take fish unless you own quota. But they said, we own quota, but we regard ourselves as stewards of a public resource. And we have the privilege of harvesting a public resource, and we want to live that and we want to make good on that. And every exposure I've had with them, and I know them quite well by now, has been true to those initial statements they made. So for them, it's kind of in their DNA. They made, when they commissioned this green fishing vessel, they made a business case for it and an environmental case for it. And that's kind of the best of all worlds. So it really varies by the company. Some, it's altruism. Some, it's being a leadership role. Some, it's connecting with customers, employees. It really varies. There's no regulatory driver that makes them do this, though. You're right. And interestingly, I think what we've seen over the last five, six years is a wave of corporate interest in this. And maybe the Trump administration withdrawal from the Paris Accord had almost the opposite effect of galvanizing corporate leaders and making them feel like if the government's not going to do it, we better do something. And don't ignore, I heard a CEO once say, my 14-year-old, I was tucking him in for bed and said, Daddy, what are you doing for climate change? So the leadership in the offsetting is certainly coming from the corporate world. That's a long answer.
No, that was perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions? I have a really quick one. This is for both of you. So hands on the button, buzzer. What do you, what do you estimate that the 10,000 trees would be worth to the city of Issaquah on an annual basis?
Do you want to answer that? Because I think it speaks to how the credits are sold over time.
Right. So the credits on a planning project are issued over time. I think the total was a little over $200,000 over the life of the project, and that's issued over time. Ideally, oh, there you go. So the net income, so this is net of all of our fees. This does not include the staff time to do this. So this is, this is really net carbon revenues to the city. So as you can see, $216,000, that gets issued over those four different time periods. That's not a wall of money that's going to solve all of your problems, but it is money you wouldn't otherwise have. And what we're seeing in places like Austin is when they start doing annual plantings, and then those credits are issued over time in those annual plantings, then you start building in that annual revenue stream. And again, the hope is, I mean, carbon credit prices have been going up. We'd like to see them continue to go up so that projects like yours can, can make this, you know, more than just a little bit of new money, but some significant new funding.
So my hand on the buzzer to part two of this. What we've, as staff, have been looking at, and as we've explored this and brought this to administration and bring this to you, is we would like to pilot this, realizing as these credits are sold over that 25-year period, what if we, if this is successful and the market has interest in it, we're planning on doing forest succession planting every year. So what if we set out applications every other year and bundled these tree plantings we were doing, and now suddenly you start to take this model and compound other applications on top of it? That's where we see there being this opportunity.
Councilmember Martz and then Councilmember Walsh?
So I just want to make sure I understand how this would work. So let's say we had a project. Let's say we were going to, oh, I don't know, tear down Tibbetts Valley Manor, and we had the opportunity to sell that property or do something like this, right? So this is, this is, we're identifying, I mean, we have trees already in the city. Nobody's going to pay us to leave our existing trees the way they are, right? This would be if we planted trees and then set those trees aside. So if we basically for, if we choose to forego the immediate revenue of selling a property and potentially developing it, but instead putting trees on it and then over 25 years accruing credits, is that correct?
The planting part is correct. I don't know the correlation with the manor. I mean, this wouldn't, this.
I was using that as an example, but you couldn't, I mean, you would have to, to identify a project, it would have to be something that doesn't already have trees on it. And I would assume the idea here is that you would plant, you plant trees instead of some other form of revenue. Because this isn't just going to be somebody wanting to give us money for free, right? This is a choice that we would make instead of doing something else with a piece of property. Is that correct?
Yes. I think the property, I think this blends in with our forested open space a little more directly than that example is suggesting. So these 10,000 trees, for example, we're planting these within existing riparian areas, within existing forested space. So it's planting that we should do as stewards of that forest for succession planting, right? For that forest. So it's not, this doesn't need to be barren acreage that we're creating new forest on.
Why would someone pay us to do something we were going to do already?
That's the, there's a market. There's an interest in carbon credits that we now have an opportunity, if we want to, to capture some revenue for work that we are already doing anyways.
Yeah, I'm still missing something because I can totally see, if you have a piece of property that is bare right now, you know, I can see, putting a system where you, where you incentivize somebody to plant trees is great, but I just don't see how somebody outside, let's just say a Microsoft, right? Why would they pay Issaquah to do what Issaquah was already going to do when they could pay a city that doesn't have trees there? You know, a project that would otherwise be dirt, and you put trees in, that has a carbon impact, whereas if we were going to go plant the trees anyhow, why would someone incent us to do that which we were going to do anyhow? So I'm missing, I'm missing something in this, in this model.
So what's accomplished with those trees in sequestering carbon? There is a market out there that's very interested in.
I get it, but if we were going to, if we were going to plant trees anyhow, if they have an option to invest in two cities, like let's say Tulsa, Oklahoma, which I believe has a lot of dirt, you know, we're going to plant trees anyhow in Issaquah versus Tulsa, where you could take a piece of real estate that was just going to be a dirt farm and turn it into, you know, 100 acres of trees, right? That's an investment that yields a change in carbon status, whereas ours, if we were going to plant the trees anyhow, it doesn't have a net impact versus someplace that would have a net impact. This is why, again, I'm still missing something here.
I can, so the short version of this is that there are different, in effect, ways of defining what is additionality. What's an additional, you know, CO2 storage? And one of those is called the project-specific test, which is you look at one specific town and you determine whether that town is doing something or not doing something new or not. The other test is called the performance standard baseline, and I'm kind of lapsing into carbon jargon, but this is how they make sense of this issue. And in that context, you find out what the baseline is in an entire region. And if the baseline is negative or zero, then any trees planted are addition to that performance standard baseline. So our scientists looked at the whole region, and we found significant tree loss in this region, which sets a negative performance standard baseline, meaning it's kind of looking at a screen. If you've got a screen, you may have one black pixel in the screen, but if the screen is white, that's going to be a white screen. So additional trees planted in that region are additional and can be credited. So that's kind of how the carbon world makes sense of that, not by narrowing the lens down to just one specific project and whether that's additional, by is it additional on a regional basis?
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
So to clarify on looking at the, this is a potential pilot project and the potential revenue there of 216,000. When we choose to plant the trees, if after planting, that column then, I guess, is associated, but there's no guarantee that we would be able to sell the credits after year three, five, or 25. There's no guarantee that CFC would still be around to own those credits or to facilitate that payment?
We issue the credits. Yes, we issue the credits.
So, but on that question of, there's really no guarantee here. So there's no way we would be able to do a project like the Tibbetts Valley or the Tibbetts Manor and say, hey, we're going to get this much money in 25 years, so we shouldn't do the other thing.
Well, the only thing I would say to that is there's a distinct possibility that you would have a buyer who commits to buying all the credits.
Okay.
And the credits would then get transferred to them when issued. So in effect, they pre-buy the credits or they make a commitment to buy them and they receive them when they're issued. So that's the ideal situation. They may pay less to, for that pre-commitment. And in fact, it may be in interest to wait and sell them as they're issued because, again, we were seeing prices go up on the credits.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Well, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. Would anybody in the public like to speak to carbon credits? David?
Sure.
In David Capler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. What I like about this program is it forces us to take care of these trees for the long term. And if we don't take care of them, we're going to lose that source of funds. It's not going to be a big moneymaker, but if it can pay for, you know, our management of our forests better, that is a moneymaker. So it could be a big savings that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Connie?
So pro is, yeah, we'd finally end up tracking our trees and actually maintaining them because often now you see the Boy Scouts planting 50 trees and then you go back in three years and there's two left. And we still count that as tree planting and it's not really anymore. And I'm assuming this would mandate it, I don't know how many hours it would take to make sure that it continued on in the work program. I don't understand, though, from the prior presentation on carbon footprint, if the city is going to be able to take a carbon credit for the same trees that you're selling the carbon credit on? Because that seems like a double whammy. Are we going to be able to say, and we sold X number of carbon credits as compared to our carbon footprint is, right? And is the money worth more than the calculation if we actually have the trees in our area? Because in a worldview, I think you're offsetting somebody else's carbon impact. And that's why they're buying the carbon credits, so that they can have you make a better world because they're damaging it in some way. So there's some equality there. And, and so I'm not sure if it was Costco who wanted to buy the carbon credits, who's in the very same town and they're impacting the same area, that would make sense to me. If it's someone in Africa, I don't, I don't, I just don't know. So I guess, I would, I would say do it because it would make us take care of the trees. And we aren't doing that now. And I don't see a way that we will ever do it unless we're forced to because there's so many other things to do. But you can see, sort of, I don't know.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else like to comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. So question that we were asked is, are forest carbon credits a potential funding source worth considering for green Issaquah programs? Thoughts from the council? Councilmember Hunt, then Councilmember Goodman?
So speaking for myself, I think, yes, I think this is a potential funding source worth considering. I think green Issaquah program is a very exciting program. I'm looking forward to seeing the progress that's made in forest stewardship that comes out of that program. I thought along, when I read the agenda bill, I was thinking some things similar to what Connie was talking about as far as the offsets. But I guess at the end, I think that this isn't changing what we would have done as a city anyway as far as the green Issaquah. And it's also that companies that are buying into this market, they would be doing what they're doing anyway as well, except that this is a way for them to participate in and fund some tree planting in a city. So it seems like a potential funding source we should consider and I'm excited to see what comes out of it.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Like Councilmember Hall, I think this is fascinating. And I, too, read it a few times and, well, not three times, but read it and had to reread a few things to understand what Connie ended up saying when she commented about companies buying credits to offset what they're doing. And I don't know what we've got to lose. I mean, it's a grant that's going to pay us to plant the trees that would start this program. And maybe the worst thing that happened is we have 10,000 more trees. And I'm trying to figure out what the negative would be. So, yeah.
Councilmember Walsh?
So on the idea of negative, I think what, what we're essentially agreeing to at this point is additional costs that the city is willing to commit as far as staff time to take care of those trees, which I don't think is a negative per se, but it needs to be associated with the idea of, hey, if we're agreeing to go through this pilot project, it's not just we're agreeing to sell credits and get money and use that, it's that we're also agreeing to take care of the trees and do the tracking. And I don't see any of that cost in this presentation. I don't see anything that really, truly says, do these credits offset our actual staff time and costs? And so that would be my only question in this. Even if they don't, I think this is still worth going after, but I think it's important for us to understand the cost and the revenue and see how much we would be needing to commit to this in this budget, future budgets, and what we're committing the city to for 25 years.
Councilmember Goodman, I'll get you in a second. I want to make sure I got everybody. Council, our Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm interested to see a more clear, specific proposal on this and see how it would play out in an example. I continue to have some confusion about how it would actually work. Sounds like a great idea in paper. Yeah, it's, you know, it's building up carbon here because, you know, people are buying credits. Sometimes it's corporate social responsibility, sometimes it's to get out of, or to mitigate stuff that they're doing elsewhere. But carbon credits in general are, I think are generally held to be good things and effective in helping reduce carbon output. So, but I want to see how it would work for our city. It's not actually a 25-year commitment, right? Because the credits are delivered on a schedule, so, you know, it's a, you get points as you go along. So, yeah, I very much want to see a proposal on this. Seems like fundamentally or should be a good idea, but I sort of want to see the details. Thanks.
Any other questions? Council President Hunt?
Quick comment to Councilmember Walsh's point. So my question about if it affected what they were doing was really to get at that in part, and it sounds like they were going to be doing the green Issaquah program anyway. They're going to be doing, planting these trees anyway. So stewardship would say, we're going to take care of the trees anyway. Though I don't think it affects our operations and I, that is why I asked that clarifying question. And one other thing that I had meant to say earlier was, I think that this kind of program is also particularly important as we think about the climate change, like what we heard in the last presentation, and when we think about root rot and all of these other issues that we have that are going to be stressing our trees more and more. We're going to need more updated ways to improve our tree health. And we're seeing already things like root rot affecting our tree health.
Councilmember Goodman?
Also to Councilmember Walsh's point, the cost of maintaining, we've heard for years that we're not including the cost of maintenance in the planning that we do. And so I think at the very least, this forces us to, to deal with that head-on and figure out what those, what those maintenance costs are. And even if, you know, this whole thing, you know, in the end, after years and years doesn't work out, I think at the very least, we have, like I said, 10,000 more trees and we also have, we also know a whole lot more about maintaining the trees.
Any other comments? Just have a couple of thoughts. I think it's important that we understand the cost of delivering on the protocol as defined by, by the program. I like the idea, though, of keeping us focused on the trees and I think it's a really smart pilot. I think as we move forward, we're going to see over the years, more and more demand for carbon credits like this. So I think it's interesting to get ahead of that and for us to learn what it's about and learn how this program could be leveraged going into the future. And then I have this really kind of off-the-wall comment I'm just going to share with you. I don't know if you're familiar with the microbank Kiva that makes microloans? I'm almost just fascinated with the idea, when you talked about the 14-year-old who said to his father, what are you doing, about how you could do micro-carbon purchases and create a, a micro-market for carbon credits as well as the macro-market for carbon credits. So just something for you guys to think about as you're marching forward.
You can come and work with us.
There you go. Anything else? Great. Thank you very much, Mark, and thank you, Jeff. Great presentation, interesting program. All right. Yeah, I was just going to ask, are you guys up for a 10-minute recess? We'll reconvene at quarter to nine? Five? I would say five, and that means you'll be back in 10? Okay. Five-minute recess. See you in 10. See you in 10. And we are back. Next on the agenda is ID 0614, Solid Waste Collection Contract Extension. And Micah Von Kowski, Von Kowski is presenting to us, our Resource Conservation Coordinator. Micah, take it away.
Good evening, councilmembers. I've been asked to keep it quick, so if we can hold the questions until the very end of the presentation, I think that'll allow it to flow a little faster, and hopefully I can answer all of them in the course of the presentation. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Solid Waste Recycling and Compost Collection Contract with Recology. We're seeking council direction on whether to extend our current contract by executing our final two-year extension option, or to begin preparing an RFP draft to go out to bid to test the market. Cities are granted a great deal of latitude in contracting for solid waste services. The last several procurement processes have been through a request-for-proposals process. This allows the city to specify a base set of services and also allows creative proposals from the haulers. An example of these creative proposals from last time is the Recology store that we have in Gilman Village, a first of its kind in the nation. The terms of these contracts are typically seven to 10 years to allow the contractor to recoup capital expenses over the long term. The rates that we will discuss later that are lower than many of our neighboring cities were the result of the city recognizing the last contract process, that it was a good time to go out to bid, rather than execute any of our extension options in our contract with waste management. The extension options in our contract are at the sole discretion of the city, and doing an RFP process now does not preclude extending with Recology. We're only required to extend 90 days before the end of the contract. However, as we'll discuss later, it's very unlikely a bidder could beat our current rates in services, and it would seem to be a poor use of staff and budget time to go out to bid and then not have a proposal that could win. Kirkland went through a whole year of RFP and then opted to extend their contract in 2017. Auburn, I believe, recently went out for a bid, and nobody applied because they couldn't beat the current rates when there were still extension options on the table. For these reasons, that I'll detail further, at this time, staff recommendation is to execute the last two-year extension, putting our contract and end date at June 30th of 2023. When I presented to council on the last extension in December of 2017, I stated that there was no set formula that you could put X and Y in that would definitively tell you whether it was the best time to go out for a new contract or not. Since that presentation, several changes have occurred in the market and in the solid waste industry that strengthen the analysis that now is not an ideal time to test the market, and that an extension is the best option for our residents. I also want to be clear that because of the changes in the markets and changes at King County that I'll discuss later, the next contract for collection services is likely to be significantly different than our current contract. And if council elects to extend the contract, staff will begin work on a new draft contract in spring of 2021, which would provide ample time, about a year, of stakeholder input to put together a base contract before releasing an RFP in the spring of 2022. So, some of the reasons behind showing that it's a good option to extend is, in 2019, Elway Research conducted a customer satisfaction survey for Isiqua residents. Given that only two years has passed since that customer satisfaction survey, we assumed that satisfaction would not have changed significantly in the last two years, and this assumption was backed up by the 2019 National Citizen Survey, where 84% of respondents rated garbage collection as good or excellent, and 87% rated yard waste as good or excellent. And these are similar to the 2017 National Citizen Survey numbers. Customer satisfaction has consistently ranked high each time we've surveyed, whether it be with Recology or Waste Management. We had a customer satisfaction survey in 2009 with Waste Management, 2013 with Recology, and 2017 with Recology. Business customer satisfaction, we had a hard time getting respondents last time in 2017. So, in January of this year, we released an online business customer satisfaction survey that we sent to as many business contacts as we had in the city. The turnout was still low, but the response, again, showed pretty high customer satisfaction for the current Recology services. The city also did a rate comparison study in 2017, and I've updated the rates in this study to reflect 2020 rates for each of the eight comparison cities. It's important to note that not all services in each contract are the same, and each city has a different, sometimes considerably different, customer mix between residential and commercial and multifamily. This comparison calculates the average monthly bill for residential, the average cost per yard of service for commercial, and for drop box services. Two of the eight cities, Shoreline and Kent, have also recently included recycling surcharges, and these are shown in the rates. So, that's some of the reasons that this table has changed from 2017 to now. And as you can see, Isiqua still has low residential rates in comparison to those eight cities and higher commercial rates. We talked a little bit last time about this cross-subsidy being a holdover from the last several contracts in the city, and haven't received any direction on trying to ease out of that at this time. That's another thing that could be discussed in a new contract. To look at the overall contract value rather than all three lines of service, to compare the total, you can look at the revenue of each city's contracted rates. If you took Isiqua's customer service levels and applied the other cities' rates, this is the table that you would get. And this is a way to compare the total cost of each contract. So, if we had another contract in Isiqua, or we had the Kirkland contract in Isiqua, for example, that would be the revenue from that contract. Again, Isiqua is toward the lower end. Kent is an example that I spoke of earlier about, they aren't all apples-to-apples. Kent does not include commercial recycling in their contract, so it's a separate fee, and that's not included in these rates, so that would be an additional cost. Kent's residential recycling and yard waste is every other week, so that's a lower cost to the hauler. And so, you see that kind of reflected here as well. In looking at this comparison, and Table 3 in the staff memo, it shows other recent procurement rates across other cities have been increasing over time. So, going out to bid now would likely result in a significant increase in rates for our customers, and our estimate is on the order of 10% to 20% of an increase. The market changes to recycling that I presented to council on in August of 2018 have also impacted newer contracts, rates, and structure. Our current contract puts all of the risk for recycling commodity pricing on the hauler. Newer contracts have calculated in that risk with higher rates, and some include adjustable recycling surcharges based on market indices, Federal Way and Mercer Island being the two most recent contracts to do so. In 2019, the state passed legislation in response to the recycling market issues. One bill created a group at Ecology that will study extended producer responsibility programs for plastic packaging. And another created the Recycling Development Center, which is a partnership between the Department of Commerce and the Department of Ecology, and this group is to facilitate research and development, marketing, and policy analysis to bolster recycling markets and processing in Washington specifically. And those groups have just sort of got underway with their work, so we haven't heard anything that's come out of them yet. Domestic processing that had been exported overseas is now beginning to come online in the United States, including, I believe, a paper mill in Washington State, which will be able to start taking recycled content paper soon and creating recycled content packaging out the other end. And this, as it continues to happen, should stabilize local markets over the long term. In addition, the city's partnered with Recology and King County Solid Waste to provide messaging and education on clean, empty, and dry for recycling. In our annual service guide in December, which is sent to all residents, we encouraged recycling plastic bags at drop-off locations instead of including them in the curbside bin and remove them from the accepted list for curbside, because they cause a lot of contamination issues at the sorting facility. This year, we also have grant funding for a commercial contamination reduction outreach program that we'll be conducting later in the spring to canvas commercial businesses and provide education on how to properly recycle, right-size their containers, and reduce contamination. We'll be working again with Recology to do their multifamily outreach program, as we have for the last three years, where we've seen a lot of great success in door-knocking at multifamily properties, offering a $250 credit to those properties for participation. And we've seen a lot of increase in diversion from those properties in reduction in contamination as well. And then we'll also continue our school programs, such as our Waste Free Wednesday in April of this year, in order to educate the youth about proper recycling. Additionally, over the next few years, King County plans to begin working on updating their rate structure. Currently, most rates are based around a per-ton garbage tip fee, and those are passed on through our rates as just a pass-through charge. And as the county and city's improved version, this tip fee could be a declining source of revenue for county operations. And they're looking at a different method necessary to keep up with their system operation costs. We don't know what this looks like yet. It's in their two-year plan, but we should, it should become more clear if we extend our contract before we do our next contract, what that's going to look like. So, that brings us back to our two options: extend our current contract at current low rates and high level of service for two more years, or test the market with a new contract process. So, if council chooses to extend, staff will have an extension drafted for the March 2nd council meeting to execute the contract extension. The 2021 budget will include a planning process for a new contract, and the goal will be to release an RFP in spring of 2022 and sign a new contract by November of 2022 with the new contract start date of July 1st, 2023. If council chooses to test the market, staff will begin immediately drafting a new contract with a goal to release an RFP this April, to procure a signed contract by November, and a new contract rollout on July 1st of 2021. And that's all I have.
Questions for Micah? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. We got a question from a concerned member of the public about variable rates, and if we could implement that so that people might recycle better and, I think, reduce their overall waste. And I wondered what your thoughts are on that, and I know we do that to some extent already, but is there a push? If, if we were to go with a new contract, would that be likely to have more variable rates, for example?
So, I think a new contract is definitely an opportunity to look at all sorts of different new options. We do currently have a variable rate structure. We have linear pricing, also known as variable or pay-as-you-throw. That means that a 64-gallon cart costs twice what a 32-gallon cart costs. Some of our neighbors in the UTC areas in rural King County are only allowed to charge cost of service. The WUTC, the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, regulates rates in rural King County, and by state law, they have to charge cost-of-service rates instead of variable or linear rates. So, I think we're seeing that our neighbors have some, they're not able to be able to charge linear rates. Most of the cities in King County do, because it's, it's become sort of a best-reducing. And I think we've seen over the last 20 years, customers continue to work to downsize as we provide education. Just as a snapshot, we provide a 10, everything from a 10-gallon cart up to a 96-gallon cart. We have, our most popular service level is 32 gallons and 20 gallons, so we have 2,000 customers of 20 gallons and 4,600 customers at 32 gallons, and only 200 at 96 gallons. So, we've worked with our customers to start shifting down by providing embedded or free recycling and composting, and that variable rate structure, which incentivizes downsizing if they can.
And then for the commercial rates, which had the very high rate relative, at least, to other cities, is there, is there an opportunity to have more of those buildings do more composting and do more recycling? So, I would think that that would be the natural incentive there, because they have high garbage rates.
There's absolutely more opportunity. In our contract, we allow commercial businesses to recycle up to 200% of the volume of their garbage at no additional charge, and so, that's not being utilized by a lot of businesses. And the issue for the hauler is, if it's free to put in that much recycling, that's where they're going to try and put a lot of material. And so, I believe in any new contract process, one of the things that would be important to do is work with the commercial businesses on different ways to audit the recycling, to make sure that it's clean before it gets picked up. I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Okay. My last question is, I've gotten a lot of questions over time from concerned members of the community about just what they should do if they, for example, if see that there's a business and they're giving out plastic bags with food or these other things that businesses, that we have ordinances or, or things against.
They should report those to the city, and they will be, the businesses will be followed up with by a technical assistance visit, and then further visits if necessary.
So, report to you? Thanks.
And restaurants are currently exempt from the plastic bag ban, so if they're getting food at a restaurant, they're exempted from the plastic bag part of the ban. Just as a note.
Any, any other questions? All right. Any comments from the public? Come on, Connie.
No, no.
So, well, perhaps there's been an improvement in multifamily housing and commercial. They're both bad. They're both bad. And so, that was Dave.
Yeah.
Without negotiating a new contract, is there a way, when you extend the two years to make changes in the existing contract, to somehow make that better? Because it's so low. You go to the apartment buildings and the garbage just stacks up, and it's indiscriminate between garbage and recycling, and they don't have composting, and it's a choice. Everything is a choice, because I just have been reading the Isquah Municipal Code about garbage, and everything is a choice. Nobody has to have it. And I don't know what happens with a garbage contract if the city says now, "Commercial, you have to have compost, you have to have recycling," and same with regular community members. And so I think, without considering what other rules that the city could lay on the community and how that deals with a contract, you aren't getting a complete picture. Maybe it has no effect, but I think at least you have to have that conversation as to what is success for garbage? Are we meeting the goals that we had anticipated? If we are not, what are our options to meet that success? And I didn't hear that in this particular presentation. Maybe it's a whole different conversation. And then I have a wee story of, I just spent almost a week trying to prevent an entire household going into the garbage because a woman had a week to clear out an entire estate. And so several of us worked mightily to get as much sold and out and gone into other people, but we still ended up with an enormous vat of paper that is recyclable going into the garbage and many other recyclables because the cost of an independent recycling dumpster is, is the same as it is for garbage. And so it would have been $1,000 between the two dumpsters. And so by definition, we put a whole bunch of really bad stuff in the dumpster just because the cost was so outrageous for a single service dumpster. So these are some ways that I personally experience all the time because I deal in old stuff, where we could do a better job. That is probably a part of the contract, but I just wanted to bring it up as a moment of concern that I experienced this week.
Thank you, Connie. Any other comments? No? Okay, moving on. Councilmember Martz.
You're looking for direction?
I'm looking for direction.
Number one, please.
Anyone else want to provide direction? Council President Hunt.
Go ahead. So I wanted to follow up on Connie's question, which was, can we do something, if we do keep the contract, so we use the two-year contract extension, are there things we can do to increase the use of compost, for example, in the multifamily buildings and more recycling in the multifamily and commercial buildings and other things to overall reduce the carbon footprint without making those changes in a contract?
So in our current contract, multifamily composting is allowed and available to complexes for free, and we have worked very hard to try and get multifamily complexes to come onboard and provide the program, and we've met with a lot of resistance. So I think outside of the contract, there's regulations you could put in place, but I think within the contract, you can only push so hard if it's not required. And I feel like we've pushed to that extent.
But the council could consider changes to law.
Right. Okay. That's, that's helpful. So my, my comments are, it does seem that people are happy with the existing service. It's been reflected in this survey, it's been reflected in past surveys. We do have these low rates for residential, and I think the store is also an interesting, an interesting addition, and I think it's well-liked by the community. I, I also know that a lot of people living in those multifamily buildings that don't currently have compost, the residents, I've heard from them, several of them, that they would like to have that composting. And so I think, I think it is really important, some of our, you know, as we grow as a city, we're going to have more and more of these multifamily buildings. That's in our plan, and so I think we need to make sure that those buildings are served by compost and recyclable. And that's a big way, I think, that we could reduce our, our waste, and it would also be something that people would want to do. So I'm really interested in different ways to make that more possible, and I basically agree with option one. I think that keeping those rates for now and doing the contract extension makes sense, but I would like to think about how we can overall reduce our generation of waste in the meantime, and then also going into the next contract phase, which will be inevitable.
Councilmember Walsh?
So plus one to what Council President Hunt said. I'm interested in option number one, but also ways outside of the contract that we can pursue more waste diversion and waste management in some of those commercial experiences. But then I would also say, if we end up taking a two-year contract extension, knowing that we have a potential RFP coming at the end of that two-year period, when the recycling markets have changed drastically, and knowing that we potentially have a large increase in our contract costs and the rates to our users, I would say, starting some kind of a community conversation or an understanding of what we would want out of that, just to get ahead of it a little bit, because I feel like this is going to be a really painful one for us, since we're going to be one of the first to kind of have that contract update after this recycling market change.
City Administrator Buckwitz?
And our plan would be to have a year-long community conversation, starting next year. But I, I think the council has to also look down the line of what do you wish to legislate? That most communities are in similar boats that we are, that we work with multifamily housing, and unless there is a law, there is not the incentive to do it. Where we've, we're talking the last item about goodwill and buying carbon credits, this is sort of the other end of the sustainability spectrum. And I think that in many communities, they've had to make the decisions of mandating this and having fines associated with it. So I would encourage the council in your quiet moments to start thinking about where you land on that, because it will likely be a question put to you as we look in the next year or so at what, how we want to make this better for the whole community.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I very much appreciate that perspective, and I think it's important for us, when we start to have those conversations about legislating and regulating some of those areas, what the potential benefits could be to consumers on this next contract, and how it might help save them money as a way to frame that conversation as it comes back to us.
Councilmember Goodman, then Councilmember De Michele.
I am in favor of the contract extension. Thank you.
I also am in favor of the contract extension. I live in a multifamily complex, and we have 48 units, and I totally agree with Connie Marsh's comments. It is, it is really terrible. But I do have a little anecdote to share. There was a period of time when people were throwing boxes into the recycling completely, you know, not flattened, and the condo management put up big signs that said, "You must flatten your boxes." And lo and behold, people started flattening their boxes. So I think that education, if we continue this contract, that I agree with you, that if we undertake some education, I think people want to do the right thing. Sometimes they just don't know what the right thing is. And so if we can pursue that education. And then as a member of a condominium complex, I did not even know that composting was, was allowed. So I think if you, if, if my fellow residents knew that, we would, we would certainly be approaching our homeowners association. So I would certainly look at that as something that we might want to legislate in the future so that the homeowners association doesn't have a choice on that, because I think there's a lot of support for composting in multifamily complexes. But I think Recology has certainly earned this extension of the contract.
Councilmember Hall?
Let's make this unanimous, why don't we? I'm not at all interested in testing the market at this point. I won't repeat what's been said because I agree with it all, but I would also like to add that I'm interested in having a conversation within the next two years about city rate assistance, those low-income residents that live in our community too, who will be, in fact, impacted most by rate increases, especially those families, well, who are low or fixed income in our community, who a large jump in a monthly payment like that could mean the difference between housing insecurity and homelessness or, or the jump into housing insecurity. And I think this council has already shown a tremendous amount of activism in this space with water utility tax assistance and even burial assistance recently, so I'd be interested in having that conversation moving forward.
I'm gonna actually make it unanimous.
Unanimous is providing traction.
Yeah. Unanimous is providing direction. I think there's a couple of things. One is, taking advantage of the two-year extension makes a lot of sense, given the great rates we have and the current service levels. It opens up a possibility for, as City Administrator Buckwitz talked about, an ongoing community dialogue. So it gives us that window to actually go out and find out what is important to people. And that's going to help us inform how to improve solid waste management in multifamily and commercial settings, so that we, as we move forward with this, have a better sense of that. It's also going to help us define, as a community, what is success around solid waste management? And finally, what are the measurements we want to have in place to see if we are actually being successful in that? And ultimately, if we take the time, if we engage with the community, if we understand what we're trying to accomplish, we can craft a better RFP, and we will get a waste hauling contract that's going to better align with the needs of this city. So I think we're in a really good position with Recology right now, and I think we're in a really good position as a community to grapple with this issue going forward. So, if there's anything else? All right. Mica, thank you. Also, right on time. Okay. We're gonna move on to our final agenda item of the day. It's ID 0601, Shoreline Master Plan Periodic Update. And we've got Doug Yormick, Assistant Planner, presenting, and I see a cast of thousands moving to the end of the table. All right. A cast of three. Well, welcome and take it away.
Evening. I'm Doug Yormick, Assistant Planner with Development Services, and I'm here with and our consultant from The Watershed Company, Alex Kaprin. And we're here coming back. We were here back in August. So August 12th, we presented our Shoreline Master Program, the periodic update. And during that presentation, there were some questions and recommendations raised. So this study session is coming back with the response memo to those issues and questions that were raised during the August 12th meeting. So our direction is to ensure that we've adequately answered those questions and confirm that the SMP periodic update is ready for adoption. So there are, I believe, a couple of new members, so I'm going to do a quick crash course in the Shoreline Master Program. So Shoreline Master Program are, it's a document set of regulation, development regulations within shoreline jurisdiction. These regulations are jointly adopted by Department of Ecology and the city. Shoreline jurisdiction is defined as 200 feet upland of shorelines of the state. So shorelines of the state include streams with annual flow of 20 cubic feet per second or greater, lakes greater than 20 acres, and all marine waters. So for the city, we have three shorelines of the state: Isquah Creek, the East Fork of Isquah Creek, and Lake Samamish. This is a map of shoreline jurisdiction stretching from Lake Samamish all the way down to the south end of the city. The different colors along the way are different shoreline environmental designations, which act as, as, almost like zoning, so there are different uses that are allowed in each of those environmental designations. The purpose of the periodic update was to address recent amendments to the Shoreline Management Act and Ecology Guidance. Ecology provided us with a gap analysis to review our SMP against and see if any, any changes needed to be made. It also needed to be consistent with city-adopted plans and development regulations. During the, the last update, which was in 2013, we've updated our comprehensive plan, park strategic plan, and then we had a whole redo of Central Isquah, as the Central Isquah Design and Development Standards. And those three things needed to be incorporated. And then lastly, it was make it easier to navigate for staff and residents. We added hyperlinks to a lot of the codes, updated codes so that they were corrected, et cetera. During the update, we had a public process. We start, we started off at River and Streams Back last spring, then held two public hearings with Planning Policy Commission, after which we submitted our draft Shoreline Master Program to Ecology in July, early July, July 5th, to be exact. And then we received our initial determination from Ecology on August 9th, which we had to do some edits to, but other than that, the SMP to Ecology was, was good. Following, immediately following getting our determination, we had a presentation with council at a study session back in August, and now we are back here. So following the August 12th work session, staff was emailed questions and requests for information from council and from YARA. In response to, to those questions, we confirmed their priorities. We confirmed that their priorities were in the SMP, or to clarify the SMP language in order to achieve priorities. And you can find the council response memo in Attachment A. I'm gonna hold on this slide and just continue on, and then go back to this for questions at the end. So our recommendation, if, if everything, the council response memo and the SMP is good, that we would be returning to the March 2nd, 2020 council meeting for adoption on the consent calendar. Following this meeting, if there are any additional edits needed from, from council, we would incorporate those edits from the study session and then return those to you in the agenda packet for March 2nd. And then recommendation again, and then I guess we will go back to questions on the response memo.
Councilmember Hunt?
One question I have on the response memo is that in the before if council decides to fund the work earlier. So I wanted to clarify something because in an earlier version of the memo, it says that that next full update is 2027.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's 2027 unless council decides to consider this earlier.
And there's a, there's an adoption process if we wanted to address something prior to 2027.
Right. I'm familiar with that. And I'm wondering too, what are the implications if we wanted to not adopt this on March 22nd, but allow for more time? What are the practical implications of delaying this?
The main one being that the Shoreline Master Program would be slightly out of date. I mean, it's, it's relatively new compared to when we adopted our last one, which was close, it was 23 years old, I believe, at the time. So there are some subtle differences between our current SMP and what would be adopted. If we were to adopt this, then that at least brings our SMP up to date and then allows us time to research those topics.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
So I wanted to know, since it last went to River and Streams 11 months ago, almost 11 months ago, what are your thoughts on whether it should go back to River and Streams? I mean, that was, it seems like it was at the beginning of the process.
Mm-hmm.
So I was wondering if it should go back to River and Streams for their final input.
That's up to the council. I, I think that I came late to this, this game, and I know that there had been a considerable amount of dialogue among members of the council on this. I'm still not sure what a deadline is. I think the council president has indicated a desire for further work. What I thought I heard you say was that the longer we wait, the longer it's, we don't have a good plan in place. But is there any statutory requirement?
There, well, there's statutory requirement was that, that they be adopted by June 30th of 2019. That's, when Ecology gave us our grants, that's when the grant expired for, for the work. We completed the work except for local adoption by June 30th. And now we've just been going through the local adoption process. But there are no penalties for, for us going beyond that time, except that we no longer have access to the grant funds that we had for the update.
And those have been, were already used?
Those were already used, correct.
All right. So I think that one of the questions for the council tonight is next steps. That if there is, if there is content issues you wish us to address, we can do that. We can then have that content come back to another study session. If you're satisfied with having us address them, we can advise the council of how we've done that, and then take it to Rivers and Streams, and then come back to the council at a regular council meeting for adoption. It's really up to your court. So I think whatever you all feel is appropriate. I know in talking with the council president today, that I know she has some additional work that she would like to see done on this. So I think we're not, I don't think we're done. So I think the question for the council is, what do you think the path forward is to, to finalizing this?
So I'll toss out my thoughts, just for my fellow council members and the public who's here that my comment could think about, that it seems to me that this would be an item that would go to Rivers and Stream, River and Streams. And since I'm not hearing any reason not to, that at this time, I would be interested in that.
So I just want to do a little process check. So we're kind of going into giving guidance, and I would like to do questions first, and then I'd like to have some time for public comment, and then we can go into, into directing. So, any questions? Council President Hunt?
I have one more. When I had met with you, I had been under the impression that there were going to be potentially some changes regarding lighting to address some of the salmon lighting survival, salmon survival concerns from YIRA 8. And then I did send, submit the letter from YIRA 8 with best practices. And so I'm wondering, but then I also see that in the list of responses, it has recommended action, staff will report to council on lighting as part of Title 18 update. And so I'm wondering if there were any changes made to lighting? Because I, because we had talked about, you know, like putting timers on docks and a bunch of other things that you thought might fit into this update.
We, we think, we agree that it is a tool that ties in and dovetails with the Shoreline Master Program. I think that we wanted, there were two things that we wanted to address through Title 18 rather than in SMP. One was that YIRA 8 is continuing to do research. We have not gotten definitive. They did have the five recommendations that were in the letter, which we agree with. I think another piece was that many of these would impact almost all the uses along Lake Washington, or Lake Samamish, excuse me, are single family. And so we don't typically review lighting on single families. So we would want to work with council to make sure that the process is one that you're comfortable with. And the third was, like, all of our lighting standards currently reside in the rest of Title 18 rather than in the Shoreline program. And one of the things that we've observed in working on Title 18 is that when we put regulations in unusual locations, staff don't always find them because they're not where they're expected. So for instance, the lighting regulations that we have for critical areas are in the rest of Title 18 rather than in the critical area regulations. So for that reason, our recommendation was to do it with the rest of the lighting piece rather than to insert it into the Shoreline Master Program.
To be clear, though, there weren't any changes yet made as far as like the active controls for using light only when needed and the other, the other changes, that timing on lights on docks and those other things. There isn't any change to the plan right now about those things, right?
Correct. We did not change the Shoreline Master Program.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will move to public comment. Would anybody in the audience like to share their thoughts? Steve?
Hello again, good folks. So I mentioned this part of the context that I live on northeast Dagwood Street, which is adjacent to East Fork of Iskwa Creek, which definitely saw some flooding issues in recent timeline. That kind of sets my focus and my bias as I'm talking with all of you. So I know that one of the things that concerns me is that in light of the recent flooding is that the appeals process, the approval process for putting structures into the 100-foot setback structure needs to be more of a bright demarcation line and very hard to break and enter that zoning. I don't see that, any of that included in this body. I don't see anything that would prevent impervious services from being placed within 100 feet of the body. I, I look as an example, I'm not trying to be challenging on this, but the evergreen. Part that recently broke into that barrier is an example of something that should not be allowed to happen, our definition of that. If we're still also looking at things like the lighting that's going to be part of Title 18, I think that needs to be part of this conversation. I know I own northeast Dagwood Street. I see a lot of trees that used to not be in the creek bed are now surrounded by water and root systems worn away. That's, I've seen that on Gilman Boulevard in a couple places. I've seen ivy that is going to threaten the life of those trees. That needs to be part of stream management. That needs to be part of this code, I think, too. Simply say we'll look at Title 18 later down the road and not include that in this conversation. While I would like to see if, I guess, I understand that it's outdated and needs to be included, and maybe we shouldn't wait. I don't want to have to look at things piecemeal as we do. We need to look at that more today and now, not further down the road. Because these things are, I think, as representative to you as a council, were linked and have some correlation. I think you need to consider that as a body to keep that correlation cohesiveness as part of that. We're losing too much too soon, and we have to have a more strict requirement to make those things happen. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. If we don't insist that it happened, it's not going to be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So this was always presented as a minor update. When it went to River and Streams Board, it was not a holistic update. It was always constrained by cost and time. And so people were discouraged. Every time we asked for something, it was like, well, that's not this one. Well, it needs to be at some point in time that we do a holistic review of this, and we can't wait that long. So I guess what I would say is we need to get something into place, but with a time certain for review and potential for budget funding for next year, if you don't want to do a mid-year budget allocation. Because this doesn't get it done. Not enough money, not enough time, not enough input. So I don't think you can fret about the details when they want to move on with it, because nobody will get anywhere as much as we pound our heads against the wall. So we need to restart the process with more money. I don't know how much money was it? $50,000? Is that all? So we might need a lot more.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else? Thoughts on moving forward with the Shoreline Master Plan? Council President Hunt?
So I have, I have some thoughts, and then I have an idea on how we might proceed. So thoughts. First of all, I think having a more, more holistic conversation, I think that was a good way of putting it. I think we should do that. I think that this is extremely important. The shorelines are extremely important, and what happens to them in the future is extremely important. And this is the code that regulates development along our shorelines. So I've, I've also been wanting to include improvements to best reflect best available science in this update. And I've also come up against that basically the funding was already used for this work by the time we got council's very first touch on this work. It had already gone through the public process, and the funding for the work had already been done. And so there really wasn't any chance to change things. But I think there's a lot of things that have a lot of, a lot of room for community conversation and also for potential improvements that would reflect best current available science. One of them is this common line provision. I spoke yesterday with Department of Ecology about this, Joe Burkar in the Department of Ecology. And the common line provision is a provision in our current Shoreline Master Program that allows you to draw a line between, if you have existing homes in the shoreline buffer, you can draw a line between the existing homes, the front of the existing homes, and build a new development, a vacant lot, or redevelopment up to the common line between the two homes that are already in the buffer. So it means that in that case, when you have these existing homes that are in the buffer, we're no longer enforcing our shoreline buffer, which is what best available science says we should do for the habitat. And I think as well for the development, because we're seeing that we're having more flooding, I think that will continue with climate change. And I think we just don't want people building in the buffer. So I think that should be looked at. And it, that common line is not something every jurisdiction has. Some jurisdictions do not have that at all. Some have it within a certain limit. So we could consider that. And also, this doesn't have to be as part of the update. We could do a change to the common line provision separately from the update at any time in the year. And I think we should consider it. The other thing with that update, it's, it's talked about, you know, we need to do a study. So I asked about that. And the response that I got from Joe was that it's, Joe at Department of Ecology was that it's really dependent on the specifics of the scenario. So if it's a big change in scope, if there was, for example, a lot of vacant lots and it's going to change for a lot of properties, then they need a rationale that just explains the scope of the work. But really, they're just looking for a rationale, a study that explains the rationale. And he thought also, depending on the situation, it might be a qualitative rationale. So just something explaining why we might change it, and then it would be evaluated in the scope of the entire Shoreline Master Program. So again, I think that's a, that's a big issue, especially because it also covers redevelopment. And I think we should, we should give that some time and consideration and understand the implications of that, especially given recent flooding. The other one is the artificial lights. So it was mentioned that YIRA 8 does not have a definitive, they actually have a task force right now where they're looking at giving definitive recommendations for cities. So they didn't want to give, they didn't want to give the recommendations of that task force yet because the task force is still in progress. But at the same time, they did provide a letter that has five different things that we should include, and those include shielding, which I know there are some provisions already, but also the use of these active controls, timers, motion detectors on docks, et cetera. And so I think that that should be included. That is specific to shorelines. But we should, we should talk about how to enforce that as well as have a community conversation about that. The other one is minimize brightness to the amount of light needed and minimize blue, blue rich lighting and use warm color temperature filtered LEDs, 3,000 K or less. So that's another one. And then the last one, just as an example, but as another thing why I think we really can't proceed with this, or I think we should either proceed with the update and then take another holistic look and get this up to best available science or delay, I think either would be okay. But the other one is the aquaculture. We got a public comment on this from Steve, who just gave public comment, but he also emailed. And I think he says it really well. So the recommendation, I don't have it in front of me, but the recommendation is basically to not change that we allow aquaculture in all of the shoreline because it hasn't been done. So the response is regulations from Steve is regulations should be in place before an application for performing some action is submitted, as seems it cannot to legally, be illegally opposed if it does not exist. He admits it seems unlikely that agricultural use is likely on Lake Samamish as people want their waterfront property, but since it cannot be opposed without it, this is needed. I mean, we shouldn't not have this restriction because we haven't seen people build that yet. Doesn't make sense to me. So I think there's a lot more work to be done on this. I think proceeding with the update to get it to best available science, to update the links and stuff would be fine. But then I think we need to look at a lot of other bigger picture things. And I think it also dovetails nicely with Title 18.
Thank you. Any other comments, direction?
One more thing.
Council President?
One more thing. So if you, if, I would really like to, you know, I've spent a lot of time researching this and trying to think of how we might proceed with this. So at this point, I think I'm, I'm also hoping that if people agree that we should take another look at things like the common line, like this aquaculture, which I think should be excluded except for the tribes, and likes, like the artificial lights, which would help salmon, I think it would be great for me to know if you're interested in doing this. Because at this point, I've spent a lot of time on it, and I, I want to proceed, but I also want to make sure that I'm proceeding with council.
Can I say something about aquaculture? We can't eliminate the use except for one person. I guess that's all that I'm trying to say. So if we wanted to eliminate aquaculture, we would have to eliminate it for everybody. We can't give any special treatment for one industry.
Oh. We wouldn't be able to eliminate it for, for everybody except for the fish hatchet, for instance, which is considered-
for instance, which is considered aquaculture.
But for new development, for new permitting of aquaculture and agriculture?
If we don't have it in our SMP, then it...
I don't think we're, well, I mean, this is part of a bigger conversation, but I don't think that we're going to have a new hatchery on the lake.
But if we eliminate that use, then they are existing nonconforming. And if that goes away, that's it.
I think there's some research to do. Doug, at his previous job, was aware of a lawsuit related to aquaculture in which the tribes had wanted, wanted to ensure that it was accessible to them. And I hear your comment, which is, what if we're preserving it just for the tribes? And, you know, the question is, where does that leave the hatchery? So I think that there is, there's some questions about making sure that there aren't unintended consequences or legal conflicts based on case law that we would need to explore.
And I, I think it is part of a bigger conversation. And I also, when I talked with you about this in our meeting, I had raised this issue of could the tribes just, could there be an exception made for tribes under the aquaculture? And at that time, I thought that we could do that. So that's another part of the conversation. I just think we should get some clarity and should consider some of these implications. And the justification right now is not, not in my opinion, sound for not doing it, which is that it hasn't been done yet.
I think we misunderstood your question, which was what the permitting history was. So that's, that was the response. I hear that there is a broader question that we didn't, we didn't hit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
I hate spending money twice and doing something twice because we didn't get it done right the first time, especially when we're not presented with, here's the reason this didn't go as we would have expected the first time, and here's how we would do things differently. So my perspective is that I very much appreciate Council President Hunt coming with some specific areas that, hey, this doesn't make sense based on her research and experience in the area. And I wouldn't mind looking into tweaks on those areas or something else that we're particularly hearing, but I would be hesitant to go into the idea of redoing or opening up a can of worms when I haven't heard why the can wasn't, I'm terrible at analogies. That's my husband's area. Why it didn't work the first time and why we didn't get the results that we were looking for. So I think that would be what I would be looking for information from the administration if we were going to re-approach this. And on that similar note, I don't understand why the touch points between us asking the questions on August 12th, why it took until February 11th to come back, because that would be another concern for me, of looking at doing another portion of this is potentially a six-month delay where, at least when we're looking at this timeline, nothing happened. So.
So partly, the delay was in response to Council President Hunt being off the council. And we wanted to ensure that we held off until she rejoined because we knew how important this topic was to her. And with the grouping of topics, it took a little time to find the right night to, to rejoin. In, in terms of the funding, with this particular update, the state gave us a grant of $20,000 for very specific tasks. Those are the tasks that Doug outlined, which were bringing into compliance with state law and changes that had taken place to our land use code. So they, while we are welcome to do the kinds of updates that, that council has identified to ensure that we have the right tool, that was not available to us with the grant, which had very specific tasks and amounts and percentages assigned to those tasks to ensure that the mandated update achieved the expectations of the state in giving it.
So just to follow up, thank you for that full information. I think that puts a lot of things in context. So what I would say in response to that is perhaps if we're in the future time getting grant money to do a specific thing that the state wants us to do, that socializing that idea and seeing if it meshes in with anything else so that we don't feel like we're having to repeat a process would be a good way of going about it.
Other questions? Council, Councilmember DeMichelle?
Well, as someone new to the council, and I'm feeling like this, you know, I'm coming in at this very, very late and haven't heard the whole conversation and, and also not coming to it with the background and expertise that Council President Hunt brings to it. So I'm giving comments as a complete newcomer to this. It sounds to me like if we are going to reconstitute the Rivers and Streams Board into something that has a wider mandate and a more comprehensive ability to look at the big picture, that it might do us well to, you know, this has been going on for a long time, might do us well to just complete this and take it up with a broader mandate and under new city leadership, staff leadership. So that's my uneducated comment. And I must say that I learned a lot by researching just the terms and terminology and reading through the letter. And so I appreciate the detailed approach that Council President Hunt is bringing to this. I really have learned a lot, but I am feeling like I am not in a position really to give good input into whether we should stop or whether we should proceed.
Councilmember Goodman?
Is it possible to come to the March 2nd council meeting and provide some feedback about what the potential next steps could be in response to the concerns about more issues being addressed?
Councilmember Goodman, members of the council, I think that there's a fixed set of issues that the council president has identified. I'm not sure, sitting here this evening, what the amount of work that's required to do. I don't, I, I don't know that we can do this by March 2nd. Can we do this by April 2nd? Sure. But I just don't know that we can do it by March 2nd. So I think the, the question for the council is, are you comfortable with the issues that the council president has raised? Would you be comfortable with her working with staff? If we could get to a point that answers those questions, could we then be ready for the council to adopt it? And if so, would you want there to be an intermediate step with Rivers and Streams prior to coming back to the council? So how many touches does the council want to have to this further? I think is a central question right now.
Well, I, I wasn't clear. So we also heard from public comment that, let's just put this to rest and do a bigger effort later. And so I guess my, my, really my question was, if we were to put this rest on March 2nd, could we also get information about what a larger effort would look like? And I'm imagining and visioning that that would be, yes, we could do that. We could endeavor to possibly undertake it in 20, starting in 2021. We think it would cost about X. We don't know yet, but we would probably be looking at including that in the proposed budget. That's kind of what I was thinking about. And, and in terms of, I'm, this is a sort of a side comment, I want to be careful how I say it. And we all have different expertise and we all have different passions. And I appreciate that Councilmember Hunt is passionate about it, and I also appreciate all the work. But I also think that we don't have a practice of holding things. And so that's not, so holding something for a few months because someone's going to be off council, I wasn't aware of that. And folks who have been on the council with me for a while will know that the past practice has been, that's just the way the cookie crumbles. So I think, I'm not sure we should have held it for that reason. But again, it's not a personal issue. It is this general practice. I don't think that that's generally a good practice. But getting back to the, anyway, what I, that's what I, that's what my question really was. If we could have some sort of idea of how we might be able to do a larger effort, that, that would include more major changes. And, and if we could, if we put this to bed on March 2nd and then later did a larger effort, is there also something in between where we could do minor changes to it that isn't any, that's, isn't any one of those that's in the middle of that? So it gives us some time to also address, a way to address some of the issues that Councilmember, Council President Hunt's talking about. So it doesn't have to necessarily wait for the larger effort, but it doesn't necessarily hold this back either.
So I think there's three things that you've just talked about. There's what can we do to move forward the completion of this update and have council act on that? And then how do we evaluate next steps, maybe short, medium term, and then perhaps a little bit longer term? I'm not sure that we can, by March 2nd, address the issues that, that the council president has raised and bring it back for conclusion. I think we, in a relatively short period of time beyond that, we probably could. The second and third answers to your questions, we absolutely could not answer on March 2nd. So I guess what I would propose is that if the council is comfortable, in the universe of questions that would keep us from adopting the update, are those that have been mentioned by the council president this evening, that we could commit to by the end of March to come back to the council, have that ready for action, and then perhaps come to you at a study session in April and talk about the second two pieces of your statement, which is what are, what can we do in the short, short and medium term range beyond the adoption? And then what are the longer term issues? I think we could do that in the month of April.
I'm going to go with Councilmember Walsh and then Council President Hunt.
So to City Administrator Bob Kowits, what I was hearing from Councilmember Goodman was, could the administration on March 2nd come to us with a timeline for when the short term and the long term, medium, long term could be accomplished so that when we cast our votes on March 2nd, we know that there's a possibility of those other two things? I don't think you are asking for the work to be done by March 2nd. Okay.
I don't think we could scope it by March 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
We could scope it soon thereafter, but not by March 2nd.
Council President Hunt?
I was, I was going to ask a very similar question. So I don't have a concern about adopting the plan as long as, in my opinion, I think we need to address some of these bigger issues. And my understanding is we can address those issues separate from the update at any point in the coming year, year plus. And so, and also, we're going to be working on Title 18, so that's another opportunity to address some of the issues that have been raised, such as the artificial lighting issue. So I am okay with, I'm personally okay with adopting it as long as we have a plan indicated that we're going to have a way to look at this more holistically and look at some of the bigger issues that were not considered, at least by council broadly, in this update.
Great, thank you. Anyone else comments? City Administrator Bob Kowits?
So what we could do is we could come back at your April 6 meeting and I think do what the council president has asked. So give us an additional month to come up with the second and third answers to the question, and I think we could have that. And then, so that information will be included in the agenda item for action. Is that sufficient? Or would you want to have a discussion at a study session?
That would be sufficient for me, and I would look to other people for what they think, but yes, sufficient for me.
Let me ask the body the question. Is there any objection to bringing this back on April 6, giving the administration time to work through some of the open issues and to scope out the work associated with moving it forward? I don't see much objection. So, going back to, so Doug and company, do you, do you have what you need from the study session? Great. Thank you. Great conversation. All right.
Thank you all.
All right, that is the end of our agenda. I will just open it up if anybody had any final comments or thoughts they wanted to share before we adjourn. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Just watching the response to the flooding by our staff was amazing. And thank you, and thank everybody. And I saw people, I know we had also CERT volunteers out there. And, I mean, it was just amazing to see everybody in their jackets and out working really hard. And so if you can extend our thanks, I think that would be, yeah, it was awesome. It's the only word I can use.
Great, thank you.
And if I can add, we had over 200 CERT volunteers.
That's great.
At various times that were contacted, called in. This guy named Carl Pauli I saw on television. I'm not, I'm not sure who, how he fits into the city, but, but he had his vest on and he was very active.
He looked official, huh? All right, with that, we're adjourned. Good evening.